Okay. Meeting will be called to order. This is the regular meeting of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment being held electronically by Zoom on May 24, 2023 at 7:30 PM. Pursuant to Section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by prominently posting the sunshine notice of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment. Such notice has been placed on the official bulletin board at the Princeton Municipal Complex and by transmitting a copy of the notice to the Princeton Packet Town Topics, The Times, Trentonian, and by filing a copy with the Clerk of Princeton on May 19, 2023, and has been posted to the municipal website, www.pristin nj.gov/meetings. Pursuant to the extension of the ongoing state of emergency by Executive Order 292, in accordance with the Emergency Remote Public Meetings Protocol for local public bodies to conduct a public meeting without physical attendance by members of the public, notice that during this extension of the state of emergency, all regular and special meetings of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment will be held electronically by Zoom, was transmitted to the Princeton Packet Town Topics and The Times, and was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on the 24th day of April, 2020. Such notices have been placed on the official bulletin board of the municipal complex and on the Princeton website, and are to be maintained throughout the year, and by transmitting a copy of same to the Princeton Packet Town Topics, The Times, Trentonian, Comcast Media, and by filing a copy thereof with the Clerk of Princeton, notices have been placed on all window doors of the municipal complex. Claudia, can you call the rule?
Yes, Ms. Chen? Here. Coulson? Here. Davich?
Here.
DeFloy?
Here.
Driver?
Here.
Cannonbaum? Stein?
Here.
Donna?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, we have we have two hearings and five resolutions. We'll start with the resolutions. The first one is case Z22-256, 283 Prospect Block 5606, Lot 110 in the R2 Zone. The the resolution was in your packet as I as everybody had an opportunity to review it, and if so, if someone would like to discuss it or make a motion.
I move that we approve.
We have a second.
Second.
Thank you.
Who moved that? Who moved the?
Coulson. Eve and Michael.
Coulson? Yes. Donna?
Yes.
Davich?
Yes.
Floyd?
Yes.
Driver?
Yes.
Stein?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, the second hearing is case number Z22-335, 601 Lake Drive, Block 8801, Lot 11 in the R5 Zone. Once again, the resolution was in your packet. If someone would like to make a motion or discuss it.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
Who's second? I'm sorry, I didn't hear any.
Jim Davich.
Coulson? Ms. Coulson?
I'm sorry. Yes.
Davich?
Yes.
Floyd?
Yes.
Driver?
Yes.
Stein?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes. Okay. The next case is Z20-860, 14 Turhoon Road, Block 7006, Lot 1 in the R6 Zone. Once again, the resolution was in your packet. Motion, questions?
I move to accept.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
Coulson? Yes. Davich?
Yes.
Floyd?
Yes.
Driver?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes. Okay. Next case. Next resolution, Z22, Z23-316, 24 Hawthorne Avenue, Block 23.02, Lot 18 in the R3 Zone. Questions, comments, or emotions?
Board members, I have two substantive changes I wanted to suggest. There are two, a couple of references to the connection between the garage and the second floor addition being accessed by an interior staircase. It should be exterior spiral staircase. And in paragraph eight, it's on page three, the last sentence, we need to add the word screen. So the sentence indicates that the existing trees and landscaping will adequately screen the garage from Richard Court.
Okay. In light of that, would someone like to further discuss it or make a motion?
So moved.
Thank you.
A second.
Thank you.
Coulson? Yes. Davich?
Yes.
Driver?
Yes.
Stein?
Yes.
Thank you. What was that?
Nothing. Let me look at one thing, excuse me. Yeah, did you, did you call me on that one, Claudia?
You voted against it.
You voted against it, yeah.
Yes. Yeah.
On Pardo?
No, sir.
That's right. That's right. You're right. I knew I was, okay. All right, to the last one. Case Z23-336, 49 Pardo Road, Block 6820, Lot 13 in the R5 Zone. Questions, comments, or motions?
I move provo, Floyd.
Seconded, Coulson.
Coulson? Yes. Davich?
I'm not listed on there. Was I? I'm not listed as absent either.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that. Well, I believe then you voted for it, Claudia. I think that's what, looking at my minutes, my notes.
Yeah.
I have you, I have you that you voted too.
Yeah. I can't remember it, but I was looking at the bottom and noticing it was there.
And we'll make sure you're added to it.
Okay, all right, then, yes.
DeFloy?
Yes.
Driver?
Yes.
Stein?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes. Okay. Now on to the hearings. Our first hearing is case Z23-198, 1163 Great Road, Lot 401, Lot 21 in the RA Zone. Karen, is, are all the notices in order?
They are, and the board has jurisdiction tonight to hear the application.
Derek, would you like to summarize your memo?
Yes, sir, thank you.
We'll just swear you in for the evening. Do you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
May I do? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. The applicants, Rachel Choron and Darrell Jones, are the owners of 1163 Great Road. It's located in the RA Zone of the former Princeton Township. They're seeking a C2 variance, make construction of a covered patio and exceptionally required side yard setback. The property is not complying with regard to the required four acre lot area. The existing is 87,894. It's not compliant with the required 200 foot lot frontage. The existing is 153.72 feet. And it's the same noncompliance with regard to lot width, far as 200, and existing is 164.1. They are proposing to construct a approximately 1,100 square foot paver terrace with 560 square foot of the terrace being covered, hot tub, outdoor kitchen are also proposed. All of these improvements are permitted as of right, except for a portion of the uncovered terrace, which encroaches into the 40 foot side yard setback, and they do need a variance for that. The required setback is 40 feet, and the proposed setback is 32 feet. They've requested consideration under the C2 criteria, and that's a a brief synopsis of my memo. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
I, I do have a question. I didn't see, and maybe I overlooked it, but I didn't see it anywhere in the material, any information about the impervious coverage. It's, it, it just caught me, it caught my attention because the lot area is, existing is considerably less than what's required, and I know that some impervious coverage is being added, so I just didn't know what to think about that.
They actually went all the way through engineering approval with a stormwater management plan. So that was approved when it was determined they needed a variance for the setback, so there is a stormwater management plan that you could see on the plans. There's a rain garden and a planting bed. It's been reviewed and approved by our engineering Daniel sent it to them.
I think also the their application on page three has impervious coverage calcu- comparison to what's required and their under.
I'm sorry, I don't know how I missed that.
Oh, it's all right. The existing's 9.1% and the proposed is 11% of the lot area, and it wasn't excessive 400 square feet, and they did have an engineer plan that was reviewed by our engineer, and it was approved, but that's a good question. Thank you.
Thank you for the answer.
Okay. Who's going to represent the applicant?
Hi, my name's Rachel Choron. I am the applicant. I'm one of the owners at 1163 Great Road. So
Ms. Ms. Choron, before you go on, we just need to swear you in. Do you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Derek and Claudia, for all the help so far. It's been tremendous support. So like you mentioned, we're looking to apply for the C2 variance to extend the setback from instead of 40 feet to 32 feet. You know, I think a few take home messages for us that are some of the reasons we think that we're good candidates for it are the house is actually built 36 feet back from the property line, so it probably was built prior to the, the rule being made. And so we're just looking to extend a few feet beyond that for the proposed patio. The proposed covered portion of the patio won't extend beyond the 40 feet, so that's not part of the request. It's just the patio itself, which is hopefully not disruptive to anyone. Our closest neighbor, his house is setback pretty far from our property. So you really can't even see the house from this location, so it shouldn't disrupt any neighbors. And one of the biggest reasons that we want it to be in, sorry, I have this little guy with me. One of the biggest reasons we want to be in line with the house here is because there's a really beautiful large tree on the other side, right near the house, and so if we had to shift it, that tree would have to come down, and so we really want to preserve that. So those were some of the considerations we had in where the design was placed. And I don't know if you want pictures of the backyard, but I have those available if you'd like to see them.
Board members, would you like to see?
Sure.
Okay. Please share your screen.
Ms. Choron, did you take these photos yourself?
Rachel, you're muted.
I did take those myself just this morning, actually.
Okay, then what we'll do is we'll collectively call all your photos Exhibit A1. That way we'll be able to identify them in the resolution. Thank you.
Great. So that's, this is the first photo of like the closest tree immediately off the back of the house that would be affected otherwise. And then this is the area where we would be building the patio. And so you can see, you know, the, the neighbor's houses all the way back here, so extending from, you know, this line right here is what we're talking about a little bit towards this play area. So it really shouldn't be bothersome to any neighbors and doesn't disrupt any of our existing trees.
Does your property extend to the tree line?
A little bit before it, like around right here or so.
Okay. All right. Thank you. You have anything you want to at the end of your presentation?
I don't know how much you like, how much information you guys usually like. I'd say one of the biggest reasons that we're interested in this is because we really enjoy nature, and currently we just have a little eight by eight kind of builder's deck on the back of the house. So we're just looking forward to kind of enjoying the property with our family.
Yeah, I was out there, and it's a beautiful piece of property.
Thank you so much.
Yeah. Any questions of the applicant?
Yeah, I have a question.
Sure.
Because I'm a little confused. I think you said the the house already extends into the setback? Did I hear you say that?
Yeah, I believe so, so that I think the house is at 36 feet from the setback as it is. It was built in 1981.
Well, I, I guess I, I am confused because I think one of the drawings, well, your submission, your application says the right side required is 40, the existing is 40, and the proposed is 32. So either the existing is 40 or the existing is something less than that. I'm not sure what it is.
I think that is my mistake.
One of your, excuse me?
I think that is my mistake. It should say 36 there.
Well, wait a minute, Derek. If that's the case, then they
Variance for that.
They need a variance because your memo indicates the house. I know the lot is not compliant, but the house is compliant.
They don't need a variance for it. The house was built, the front, first part of the house, the front part's in the RB section, which has a different setback. So the house is preexisting. It's been there for years, so I mean, it is what it is, you know, but it is 36 feet back approximately from the right side setback.
You know, the survey, the survey shows the house, the, the 40 foot line back from the side of the house, so there's no dimension for the, the house from the property line, but it appears to be, you know, around 36.
Yeah, I see, I see that, Steve. Um, that same survey seems to show that the, the proposed patio pavers would extend even further into the setback. And I thought you also just said that it would be flush with the existing house.
Yeah, I think she, I think she said that the structure of the trellis wouldn't extend into the setback, but the patio would. Maybe you can answer that, Ms. Choron?
That's exactly correct. So the structure, my understanding is that wouldn't extend into it at all. That's setback actually from the house, and it's just the patio that extends.
Well, actually, there's a, there's a paver walkway that's shown on the
Can I respond to that?
Sure. Yes.
Good question, Michael. It's, so the sidewalks can be anywhere on the property, and that's considered a sidewalk, but the actual patio itself is, is in the setback, and the ordinance provides for a four foot exception, but they're over the four foot exception into the setback, so. But you can have a sidewalk around the side of your house, which is in the setback, and that's permissible, so that little L-shaped thing is the part of the sidewalk which would lead to the front of the house.
And so it'd only be that small section of the patio, yeah.
I see.
Okay, that helps.
Yep. Thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant? Okay. Ms. Choron, what we're going, I don't know how to pronounce your last name, so I'm winging it here. After your presentation is completed, we'll open the public portion of the hearing to anybody who would like to speak. So do you want to say anything before we do that? You're muted. Lower left is the mute button.
Oh, thank you. No, I didn't realize that was, yes, that concludes the presentation. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Board members, no other questions? Okay, I'm going to open up the hearing to the public. Claudia, has anybody indicated they'd like to speak? Claudia?
There was a a written question, and I've asked the the author to address the board during the public comment.
She's on, Mary Lou Simon?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, Simon, if you could give us your address, and then we'll just swear you in.
We're 1193 Great Road. It's Mary Lou Simon and Judy Zimmerman, who own the house together.
Okay, hang on. And you both swear or affirm that your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes, we do.
Yes, thank you.
So we are the neighbors that live behind 1163, and we've had a problem for quite a number of years with runoff that comes down. The back property is very seriously sloped from their house, and we've had to put a lot of measures in to deal with that. So our concern is if the new patio and landscaping is going to make the situation worse. I know that there are plans for some basins to retain the water, but we, we have a huge kind of stream that comes down every time there's heavy rain right onto our property, and we've had to do about, you know, $5,000 worth of landscaping to try to control that flow.
It's my chance to respond.
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, first, I'm so sorry to hear that. This is the, the first I, I heard of that, and I didn't realize that was a problem on our property extending into yours. We had the stormwater engineering design and survey done, and so they specifically looked at water runoff, and I believe the trajectory is supposed to go towards the rain garden that we're building, and that's going to be kind of lateral to our house, like about an acre away from your property, so it's not draining into the back, like left corner of our property towards your house. It's supposed to drain towards the road, so hopefully that will offset that issue.
Thank you. The, the problem we actually have is by the road. That's where the water is coming down, that part of your property that is almost on the great road, and the water is coming down sort of in that woods area between the great road and, and where our house is.
Like all the way down towards your, yeah. And rain garden is set back up towards our house.
Is it, will it hit that sort of stream that's, it's, it's higher up on your property?
Higher up, yeah, it's, it's higher than that. We have our engineer team here also who might be able to speak to this better than I can.
Are, are your downspouts and, and gutters all tied into that as well? Or are they emptying onto the property?
Maybe we should, maybe we should hear from the engineer. That might be good.
Hi, my name's Walt Chaperny. I'm a licensed landscape architect, not an engineer.
Hold, hold on, sir. Does everybody else see him? I don't, but yes. Here you are, so sorry. Sir, can we have your name again, please?
Yeah, first name Walter. Last name Chaperny, C-H-E-P. U-R-N-Y. And I also have with me Elliot Ridgeway. Would you like me to spell that?
No, I can, I see that on the screen. And gentlemen, are you both engineers or?
I'm, I'm a licensed landscape architect. I, I'm the owner of Beechwood Landscape Architecture. We've been working with the Chorons on the design. When we commissioned a civil engineering company to prepare the stormwater management plan for the township that got approved. So we were integral in the, the design of the patio and also in working with the engineer on diverting the water to the, the rain guards, the proposed rain guards.
And Mr. Ridgeway, are you an engineer or an architect or?
My background's landscape architecture.
All right, so, so you're also with Beechwood Landscaping?
Yes.
Okay. All right, I'm sorry. I interrupted you, Mr. Chaperny.
No problem. Would the board like to swear me in or hear my CV?
Oh, well, let's yes, we can swear. Mr. Ridgeway, are you going to testify as well or?
Can we both be sworn in?
Yes.
You can, you can. A gentleman, do you both swear or affirm that your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes.
Yes.
Now, Mr. Chaperny, you are a licensed landscape architect in St. Neil, Jersey. Is that correct?
That is correct.
All right.
Do you have experience in stormwater management?
Yes, I do, Mr. Choron.
Okay. Maybe you can tell us what you've done?
General grading design, pool, pool grading designs, infiltration pits, design of infiltration pits, rain garden designs as well, working with engineers to make sure we have the right plant material in the rain gardens to ensure that we have as successful rain garden.
That's good. We'll accept your testimony.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, well, I mean, currently the situation on the, the property, there is no stormwater management plan at all. It's, the water just does, in your, probably your heavy rainstorms, it does sheet flow off. So part of the requirements and the one of the things that were instrumental in the design was to make sure we did a negative offset of the proposed patio and the roof coverage. They are diverted. The downspouts are diverted over the rain garden, so we have the proper storage. The great road that you're specifically speaking to at the corner of the property, of the Chorons property, you're at elevation 328. When we get to the back corner of the property, at your property, there is a 14 foot grade change between the two, so I don't necessarily know if it, it, I, we can't really speak to how the water is flowing down great road and within the right of way. But that is a pretty significant, I would, could imagine that as the water exceeds, it goes back 237 feet along the property line, there could be a significant amount of water that comes down that great road. But the rain garden that we have on there, implemented, planted properly, will mitigate and offset the, the patio for sure.
It looks like there's a swell. It looks like there's a swell uh, between the pavement and a right of way line, at least according to the survey.
Yes, there is.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the, there is a definitive swells which starts at the top corner and whether uh, the water's coming down there, it's uh, it's, it's automatically gonna go off the roadway into that swell. So um, really that place in the water at the lowest point, we should be able to capture that. At least control it. We have a twelve inch stone layer uh, in the stone garden, which will allow for some permeation, the um, percolation of the rain, of the rainwater in addition to the uh, the plantings uh, to help absorb some of that and offset that.
But this, but the uh, the rain garden will take all of the hardscape behind the house and the roof drainage, the roof runoff?
Uh, that is correct, yes.
Okay. Alright.
How much of the roof runoff is going to the rain garden? Is it, um, I see one, one pipe. Is that just capturing part of the roof or?
The, the new roof and then also we have the back left corner of the uh, property will also be tied into that.
Okay.
Um, we are not, yeah, then we do have a patio drain, so uh, so the water will not sheet flow off of the patio.
Okay.
It will all be directed into that. Um, to, you know, the, we're not capturing any of the downspouts in the front yard. Um, but um, anything, any additional improvements in the back, we're definitely absolutely one hundred percent capturing.
And the, the patio is constructed of what? Pavers on concrete or?
Uh, no, it'll be, it'll be bluestone. It'll be a um, tight fit with the um, it's uh, yeah, wet side with quarter inch mortar joints. Yes, it will be a hard surface area.
It's wet set on top of, on top of the slab?
On top of the slab, yes.
Yeah, okay. Alright. And then we're, and that's another question. When, if, if this rain garden is to overflow with a, you know, a very large uh, rain, rain event, um, and overflows, what's the how is it, is it size that it will capture sizable rain event? If it does overflow, what's the plan for?
There is an emergency overflow on the backside of the um, on the backside of the rain garden. Uh, the, the uh, the inverted elevation is set at um, three twenty-four point one.
Right.
Um, and exceeds out, extends out towards the back um, and downward. So uh, there is a, uh, you know, a, a, the, the, the rain garden is designed to detain the water. Uh, and those, you know, significant storm events, you probably will have uh, an overflow. But at the current moment, you, there is, there's a, there is no, there's zero mitigation of any stormwater.
Exactly, yeah. I know, it looks, it looks like a good plan. I'm just asking about that. And the, the plant, the plant material in the rain garden, can you describe kind of what you're planning for the basin and the on sides?
Uh, sweet bay magnolia, inkberry holly, uh, the deer are an issue. So we gotta be cognizant of that, so you don't want to feed the deer. Uh, so there's uh, you know, uh, perennials, herbaceous material uh, that'll, so it will be tiered and layered. So we have a staggered effect of uh, the, of the, the plantings, red twig dogwood, uh, stuff that will tolerate um, heavy, heavy uh, water infiltration and, and be able to survive and thrive.
Good, that sounds nice. I, I like it when there's shrubs planted, you know, repairing type shrubs versus just, you know, just perennial. So that sounds, it's because it says there's a plan, but we don't, we don't see it. It's not provided. But that sounds, that sounds, sounds like a good plan. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, um. Well, we can continue on with the public portion. Um. I, the neighbors have disappeared. Oh, there they are. There you are, I'm sorry. I see you now on my screen. Do you have any other questions? Um. Ms. Simon?
I think we're hopeful that the um, the new plan will not only uh, stop water from the new construction, but maybe even help with um, some of the water that we still are experiencing. It does not come from the Great Road. There's nowhere visibly coming down the Great Road. It's just coming down the, the back of the property. So we're hopeful.
It's gonna, it looks like it's gonna catch quite a bit.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, any other, do you have any other questions before we move on?
We don't, thank you.
Thank you. Claudia, um, is there anyone else who would like to speak?
There are no more hands.
Okay. Alright, hearing none. We'll close the public portion of the hearing. Uh, Ms. Sharon, what we do now, you're muted again. What we do now is we, you can, you can make a closing statement before we go into executive session. That's when we discuss it uh, amongst the board members, ask any questions, any last minute questions that we have, and then we take action on it. So if you'd like to say something before we do that, uh, you're welcome to. If not, that's fine too.
Great, no, thank you so much. I just wanted to uh, say thank you for the opportunity and Mary Lou, hopefully this um, amends the issue actually and, and make some headway on it. So, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, we're going to executive session now. Uh, board members, any questions, comments, motion? It seems to me that the, the set, the setback issue of the patio is, is truly minimal. I mean, there's quite a bit of space between the uh, edge of the patio and the property line, and then there's dense planting between the uh, between this property and the home, which really does sit fairly far back. I think the uh, I think the landscape plan and the drainage will help to solve some of the adjacent neighbors issues and um, I think this would be a nice addition to the house.
I agree. I think that uh, looks like they have a nice plan for the landscape and yeah, it looks like the house really would benefit from having some usable space, especially with young children behind there from what's out there. So um, it does seem to be fairly minimal. Um. And uh, that large property seems like it's, it's in scale with what could be back there. So I, I approve it myself.
Thank you. Any other comments? If not, if someone wants to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
A second.
Who was that?
Yeah.
Oh.
A second.
Okay. Any discussion, any discussion of the motion before we vote? Okay, let's vote.
Ben?
Yes.
Coulson? Yes. David?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Driver?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Jim and Colin?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Good luck with the project.
Um, I have a question for the um, for the board if uh, if I could.
Sure.
Are we allowed to, um, I know we have to wait the thirty day period before um, the final resolution. Can we proceed at our own risk with going through the zoning and the construction process with the township?
I'm sorry, who's speaking? I can't, maybe you can see I cannot.
No problem. Uh, this is uh, Walter Chaperny with uh, Beechwood Park Architecture.
Well, Mr. Chaperny, I guess uh, I guess, I guess I'll leave that to Derek. I think normally it would be at your, at the applicant's risk because there's no resolution yet. And then there's an appeal period. Unlikely that anybody will appeal this approval, but somebody can if they wish to, a neighbor who either didn't speak tonight or you know, um, still wishes to appeal the ruling. So Derek, do you allow when there isn't a resolution yet?
Um, well, we'd like to have the resolution, but you could start through the submission process and write a letter stating that you're, you're proceeding at your own risk and holding municipality harmless.
Thank you.
Will you accept, excuse me, will you accept permit applications without the uh, without the resolution in place?
For an actual building permits issued, I want to see the resolution. So they can start the process, but.
You can start the process, sure. Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, any other questions on this? Okay, alright, well, thanks, everybody.
Have a good evening.
You too. Thank you again. Okay, um, our next and last application is case number Z twenty-two dash two seventy. This is a continuation of the uh, Sacred Coffee Roasters LLC three hundred, well, case number Z twenty-two dash two seventy-three hundred Witherspoon LLC is the owner. It's block number sixty-nine oh two, lot four in the B one zone. Um. Where did we leave off? We, we've heard testimony. I believe we opened it up to the public. There were other questions. Uh, we didn't finish and um, I guess the, who, who's representing the applicant this evening?
Uh, this, it's William here for Sacred, the applicant. We were hoping to try to answer some of the questions that were raised by the board and the public at the last meeting.
Okay.
And we're gonna try to keep it short.
Oh, that'd be nice. Do you have uh, any new witnesses?
We do.
Okay, and you know, they'll be, they'll, we'll open, we'll have to open it up to the public too.
We're fine. We look forward to it.
Okay, please proceed.
Okay, um.
Excuse me one sec, just excuse me. Derek or Karen, is there anything you want to say before we start?
Uh, well, I mean, the, the noticing is still in order. It was carried and that was announced at its last hearing, which was, I believe, March twenty-second. So the board continues to be able to hear the application. Um. I do, a question was asked by a member of the public, um, asking in uh, at the time of public comment tonight, if the board is willing to ask anyone who's speaking if they have, uh, if they either work for the applicant or whether they have some business relationship with them to indicate that to the board. Um, I think the assumption is normally that if that were the case, someone who's offering testimony would disclose that. Um, but that is up to the board. If you feel that's appropriate and if so, then um, you can indicate that now and we can.
Yeah, I, I think actually it is appropriate and I will ask that when.
So, so we'll, we'll consider that that's been asked now. So uh, if anybody uh, testifies in public comment, if they have that kind of relationship, then the board is asking that you just disclose that. Of course, you're free to testify um, and provide the comment that you want to.
Okay, good.
I'd like to put our presentation up on the screen if that's alright.
Sure.
Um, let me share my screen here.
Mr. Hair, you're up to, if this is a new exhibit, you're up to exhibit A three.
Okay. Let's see, let me see if I got this. Is it up there?
Yeah, that's, I think that's your A one. That was what you initially presented.
Um, we have updated it slightly.
You did, and that was A two, which I think you said you, I think these were photos, um, looking back at my notes for A two. I think it was.
So what would, what do you see on the screen right now? Cause mine?
We see agenda and it lists, it looks like areas of testimony. Now, we've got a picture of the building.
Okay, cause I, I can't see um, my presentation here. So I'm ju, on, on the screen. So I'm just gonna um, assume that you guys will see this screen as I uh, as I move it around. So I'd like to start by thanking you for letting us return tonight to address some of the questions raised by the board in our last hearing. And we do intend this to be shorter tonight since we dealt with many of the details previously. Uh, first, Jonathan Haley, a co-owner of Sacred, will provide a quick summary of the proposed roasting operations and why this location is important for that use. He'll also explain that Sacred has specified a particular twelve kilogram roaster they propose to use as well as the Vortex system to deal with cleaning the air from the roaster. Then Dr. Richard Ludisher, a professor emeritus in food science from Rutgers University and a food science consultant, will discuss VOCs such as diacetyl and the relevant exposure limits to these compounds. Then Dr. Ren Tubergan and Ron Kleister, Vortex, will explain how their technology cleans the air from the roaster. And they'll try to address questions raised by the board in our last meeting. Finally, Susan Favate, um, a principal of BFJ Planning, will address the variance requirements. So I'd like to start off by turning the presentation over to Jonathan Haley now.
Mr. Haley, you, you remain under oath. I know we've sworn you in before.
I can't hear Mr. Haley.
You can't either.
And Jonathan, you may be on mute.
Yeah.
Um, let me see if I see his image here.
I can see him, but I can't hear him.
Jonathan, you're on mute. Are there something wrong with your um, your microphone or your headset? The joys of cutting edge technology.
Great when it works.
Yes. Jonathan, we don't hear you.
Do you want to come back to Mr. Haley or is that, pick up your presentation if you need to do that?
Maybe what I could do is um, give a quick little summary um, that then Jonathan could give a lot more detail and then we could move on to uh, Dr. Ludisher, who could talk about the VOCs. Uh, cause I think that's a bit of a standalone topic from.
Hello?
We hear you, Jonathan. Do you hear me, Jonathan?
I heard him.
Yep. Well, while he's doing that, why don't we?
You can hear me. I can't hear you. Okay, sorry.
You can't hear?
Can't hear us.
I'm just gonna join from my phone.
Okay. When you do that, it might be a good idea to put your computer uh, on mute so we don't get feedback.
Recording, recording, recording.
Mr. Hair, can you text him to tell him?
Texting him, um. Okay, he's gone. Why don't, why don't we move on to Dr. Um.
I'm on, I believe. Can you guys hear me now?
Yeah.
Sorry, I don't know. My, my computer's not working, but I'm, I'm on my phone.
Okay, Mr. Haley, you're still under oath. We don't need to swear you in again.
Understood. Thank you. Thank you all for the time. Thanks for the patience and, and getting started here. Hopefully not, not a sign of a long night. Um. So uh, thank you again for the opportunity. I'm gonna quickly run through the uh, intended use of uh, the space at three hundred Witherspoon. Uh, and just uh, circling back quickly on uh, the way we have been operating, we have approximately three hundred square feet in a fifteen hundred square foot facility in Munaki today. Our green coffee is transported uh, from the port twice a month to that location. We roast that coffee once a week, uh, and then transport it by van to twenty Nassau Street, our current coffee shop here in Princeton. Our current. Our current roasting volume is approximately two hundred to three hundred pounds per week, which equates to approximately ten thousand four hundred pounds to fifteen thousand six hundred pounds of coffee a year. If you can go to the, yep, thanks, Bill. So we're proposing to open a cafe at three hundred Witherspoon. You've heard me say that. We want to put a micro roaster in that space. That that area of the space that we're going to occupy is identified by the green square. So a very small portion of a an overall cafe. I'll describe the use of the rest of the square footage here in a moment. But moving to this location gives us some great benefits, one of which is we can bring the majority of the coffee that we roast throughout the year to the location and have it stored here so we don't need to make trips out to the port. And then on a frequent basis, we're proposing to roast one to two times a week at this location. That roasting will take approximately two and a half hours a week. We will deliver a portion of that roasted coffee to our current coffee shop at twenty Nassau Street. And the projected volume that we're talking about roasting here in the new location is three hundred to five hundred pounds per week, which equates to fifteen thousand six hundred to twenty-six thousand pounds per year. And that increase is inherent in having a second coffee shop here in Princeton. If you could go to the next slide, Bill. This is a kind of a rough floor plan of the space that we're going to occupy. To the left there is the lobby, the entry. You walk into the right where it says coffee bar. We're going to have a large coffee bar where you can order coffee just as you would at our current location. There's seating right near the bar there, and behind that is a cold, it says cold brew. But that's actually going to have a big glass window, and you can see the where the cold brew is made. In the upper left-hand corner, we've dedicated a large portion of the space to seating. That's something that we don't have at our location at twenty Nassau, which is less than a thousand square feet. In the upper middle there, there's a couple bathrooms. In the back is a cupping room, and I'll talk about that in a little bit. But we're really excited about that. It gives us an opportunity to bring the the public into experiencing all the coffee samples that that we bring in from around the world. And it's it's a little bit like wine tasting, but we're going to have coffee tasting, and the public will be able to sign up and come see what our coffees are all about. To the right of the coffee bar is a grab-and-go area. We're going to have some small bites. Where you'll be able to get food and then go sit. The red circle is where the roaster is going to be located. And then behind that is where we intend to store the green coffee that I referenced. I say all that, just so we're clear, this is dedicated to a coffee shop experience, of which roasting will be a part. If you go to the next slide, Bill. This location, why? We talked a bit about it. I don't think I hit this home maybe as well as I could have at the prior meeting. We talk about experiential cafe. What does that mean? Hopefully, you have a little bit of a better idea now that I described the floor plan. But this is, I'm just going to take two more minutes here and put my my heart out there a little bit because this is this is important, what we're trying to to do. And Serge, who's on the call, has been traveling around the world to try to purchase a wooden sailboat that ships cargo. He's knocking on every single insurer in the world to try to ensure that boat so that we can ship coffee by sailboat instead of by cargo ship, which is one of the most detrimental transportation systems to our environment. Probably to probably to a fault. He's trying to do the right thing. He's working tirelessly with Bill to try to identify a new way to roast commercially electric. Will be the first roaster at our commercial operation up in Canada to roast electric, hydroelectric. We'll be the first. And again, it's, this is to try to do the things the right way because the footprint of coffee is not insignificant. We're trying to change that. I bring that to the fore because the coffee shop that we're trying to open here in Princeton ties those efforts to what the coffee shop here in Princeton, but it also ties Princeton to those larger efforts. And I think it's a big missed opportunity because if if we don't roast coffee here in Princeton, it's a huge missed opportunity for us to share those stories with our patrons and people that are going to come from New York, Philadelphia, and beyond. This type of coffee shop, it's not it's not new. It's not novel, but but it primarily sits in the cities. So people that are on this call that have seen this have said, oh, I was in Brooklyn. I saw something like this, and it was amazing. It's a great vibe. So when when COVID hit, my manager at the time, I came to her and I said, you know what? Small world and Rojos are shutting down. We've got to shut down. And my manager said, no, we can't. This this place is what the people want and need in this time. They're looking for connection. We went out on a limb and we stayed open to hate mail and to a lot of other things, but we did it the right way. And we stayed open specifically because of that connection. So why does roasting make sense? I'll tell you why. So I talked about the green sashes that are going to be sitting there in the corner. They all have the names of foreign countries on them, and they're huge. They're huge discussion points. People look at that and they're like, oh, what is that? Oh, it's green coffee. That's before it gets roasted. Oh, really? It's from Kenya or it's it's from Guatemala. Tell me about that. Let me tell you about the farmers that we just met in Portland, who spent every last dime they could to go to the coffee show so that they could meet us because we buy their coffee. And their families have been doing this for six generations and beyond. So we're doing this in the restaurants. People are opening up their kitchens. The breweries are opening up breweries, right, in their in their bars. It's just a kind of logical way of connecting with with our product. I don't need you to buy my coffee, and I don't certainly don't need folks to be bought into that concept. But that's that's why we're doing this. And it's, I think it's going to be an amazing thing for this town. And it's it's pretty cool, and I'm excited about it. And if it's not innovative, I don't know what innovation is. So the last piece on here is the success of the economic revitalization of this side of town. We all know there's there's a lot more happening down here now than there used to be, and we're pretty excited about that. I'm going to finish with with one last piece here. I have zero interest in harming anybody, let alone children. I've got three kids in the school system. If I thought that putting a roaster in this location was going to I mean, like, make a child look the other way, I wouldn't do this. I have all the confidence in the world that what we're looking to put in here is not just not harmful. It's 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 actually going to be something that helps these children grow. So I'll leave it at that. Bill, if you could go to the next slide, I just want to identify one point that we didn't on the last call. In twenty twenty-one October, the state of New Jersey joined several other states in adopting cottage food law. What's a cottage food law? Well, residents can cook in their own home and then and sell their product without oversight. They need to get a permit from the health department, but there's no oversight from the health department. Why is that interesting? Coffee's on that list. So everybody on this call in their home could put in a roaster and sell coffee up to fifty thousand dollars in sales per year. How does that compare to what we do at Sacred? Last year, we sold just under one hundred thousand dollars worth of beans in our bag. So our our storefront, which is dedicated to coffee, opens seven days a week. You know, did approximately twice what the state of New Jersey permits us to do in our own homes. So I I take that as a you know, it's, we're proposing to roast here, and we're proposing to put on a device called the Vortex, which is going to clean air. And we're going to do it the right way. We don't have any desire to roast out of homes. We want to be able to invite people into the experience, as I mentioned before. So with that, I'm going to hand it back to Bill, who I believe, I'm going to hand it off to Rick to speak to the VOCs.
Well, first, I'd just like to ask the board if you have any questions of Jonathan. I think he.
I have one.
Okay, please go ahead.
I have one. You may have answered it at some point. How long will it take to roast the two to three hundred pounds of coffee you're going to do for a week?
Yeah, so I have exact numbers here for you. I left the numbers as we had presented them previously. But three hundred pounds of coffee equates to one hour and fifty-three minutes approximately of roasting time.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, that was all the questions I had. Any other board members have any questions?
That's per week. Sorry, I don't.
Okay.
I do have a question, Steve.
Sure, Michael.
Yeah, it's kind of a, not an odd question, but you know, the good purposes that you're you're talking about. Do you happen to use electric vehicles to bring the coffee down now?
So we do. At times, we have personal vehicles that are electric. We have put ourselves on the waitlist for a I don't know. It's like a pickup, but that's electric that we don't have yet, but that will be the intention. All right, if you're talking specifically about what we bring from the port in our commercial thing. Is that correct?
Yes.
That's our intention, yes.
Okay.
It's gonna, it'll take some time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question.
Sure.
I I'm recent, I was not at the meeting because I, but I watched the video of the last meeting in March so that I could participate tonight. And I I know it's it's recent in my mind that there were questions about maybe because of the school, maybe you would have, you know, you might, we might ask you to roast at a time when the kids wouldn't be there. But what I feel like I have not heard or else I just missed it was would be, what would your idea be? I mean, it seems like it's it's interesting because it's just under two hours a week. And I'm curious to know what your idea would be of when you might make it available for people to observe the roasting, to be there, how?
It's a great question, and
Oh, when they show up at the right time. I'm sure you have a thought about that.
Yeah, and I mentioned the cupping room, where we will invite people in for those cuppings. That'll be at a at a set time that we would invite the public in. I I think for the benefit of everybody, we would we would keep a consistent schedule that we we develop once we we open up and give people the opportunity to be a part of that at that set schedule, if that makes sense. I can't tell you exactly when that would be, but I'm certainly open to discussing. But I I wouldn't want to say spread out. You know, that's like ten minutes a batch. That's the way this works, right? Like a thirty-pound approximately batch takes about ten minutes. I wouldn't spread that out, and I would. We would do that in one fell swoop, either once or twice a week, and then open that opportunity up to others to see. Answers your question.
Yeah, it does. Thank you.
Can I add that some of the questions you're raising, having to do with the school next door, will be answered by Dr. Ludisher as well as the folks from Vortex? And maybe that'll address some of the concerns you might be having.
No, well, I was.
Which are valid concerns, but it might address some of those.
Right. I wasn't even, I was just curious to know what your, what the the thought was because.
I have one more question.
That's all.
Yep.
I have one more question. The food you talked about, that's going to be prepackaged. You're not, you don't have, you don't have a kitchen onsite, so.
That's correct. Yeah, we don't, we didn't seek approval for for cooking onsite. It's similar to what we do at twenty Nassau, where we have pre-prepared foods.
Sure.
Make available.
And you are going to maintain your roasting facility in Munachi?
For a period of time, but likely not.
Okay, so then all the, so this, if you move that, is it going to be your? I don't know what the volume you do in Munachi is, but is that all going to move here or is that?
Yeah, so sorry, just to be clear, that we we partner with somebody who does roasting for others, but the volume that I'm talking about is that we roast in that facility now is the same volume that we would be roasting here in Princeton. We're not going to do anything above and beyond. Yeah, so not to confuse further, but we have a roasting operation in Canada that's completely distinct from everything, from either Munaki or Princeton. And there's no no real connection between those.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
I have another question, too.
Please.
And it's regarding potential scheduling. If if this is going to be an attraction, in my thinking, I would be thinking you would want to do it sometime on the weekends also. Which is, have you given thought to that if you're looking to attract people? Which is also, it's also the time when most more of the neighbors are home. It seems to be a conflict.
Yeah, I, and again, I think this is something that ideally I'd like to work out once we open and in partnership with, you know, the the community and our customers. But it's a good point, and I I would like to do some roasting on the weekend. My my handling of that would be to do the majority during the week, but then give a clear window on the weekend that's short, a few batches. So there's there's a limited amount of roasting that's happening. Again, if that isn't an avenue we wanted to go down, that that's, I think, open for discussion. We have a pretty significant, at our current location, we do have a pretty significant weekly clientele. So I think, again, as long as there's a known schedule for for the folks that do want to work it in, we, I think they'd find that opportunity. Hopefully, that answers your question.
One question. Yeah, that's, go ahead.
So the the volume that you're roasting, I think this was touched on at the last meeting, that some of that volume is also being delivered to local restaurants. Is that still the case, or is this mostly supporting the two coffee shops?
It is. It is mostly supporting the two coffee shops. It does include, and I think that was on one of my slides, it does include a small volume that we do for a few of the restaurants here in Princeton.
Okay, so about how much of the volume is is coffee shop versus restaurant?
And that would continue. About fifty pounds per week is going to the restaurants.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I ask, I have a, I have a question for Derek. I can't find Derek, your memo that outlines the variances they're asking for. Can you tell me where that, where I can find that?
I could email it to you.
Okay, because I've got, I've got the big, long list of stuff that Claudia sent out, but I don't know. Okay, because I've got, I've got the big, long list of stuff that Claudia sent out, but I don't know where in that list of stuff your memo would be.
Stephen, if you look, if you go into the municipal website under zoning applications and then three hundred Witherspoon, you can find Derek's memo that way as well. And I think it may say ZB memo.
Okay, I just found it. Thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
No problem.
Okay.
We we hit later in the presentation, we hit specifically Susan was going to run through that with with you, those specific points that were were outlined in Derek's memo.
Okay. All right, any other questions on the board right now with this witness?
Um, just an observation, Steve Cohen.
Sure.
FYI, I don't think the presentation is with our questions going to be that short and you got fifty-seven people in the attendee audience. Just there that I'm not saying truncate anything, but just be aware.
All right, well, let's move on. Let's keep the presentation going.
Yeah, and I hate to say it, but we're we are going to dig into the science of this because there was so much brought up at the last meeting. We wanted to make sure we we properly canvas the the discussion around the output from the roaster.
Okay.
I'd like to now introduce Professor Ludis Ludischer. Dr. Ludischer is a professor emeritus at Rutgers University and a consultant in the food science industry. And Dr. Ludischer, would you please tell us a little bit about your educational background and other qualifications in the food science industry?
Professor Ludischer, I can't see you, but that doesn't mean that you're not on the screen, but we do need to swear you in. So do you swear or affirm that your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Right.
So my background is, I received a PhD in chemistry from the University of Oregon. And in nineteen eighty-eight, I was hired by Rutgers University in the Food Science Department. I rose to the rank of professor and retired last summer after thirty-four years and am now an emeritus faculty. Anything more you'd like to know?
No, I'm comfortable with that. Go ahead.
All right, so I've been asked to comment on the the technical aspects of volatile organic compounds that come from roasting coffee. These start with a definition. The EPA website defines a volatile organic compound, a VOC as a compound with a high vapor pressure, that is, it very readily goes into into the gas phase and low water solubility, meaning that it's not readily soluble in water. And VOCs are thus organic gases emitted from solids and liquids, and they are literally emitted from every solid and liquid on the planet. They're basically what determines what something smells like. And the sources include, but of course, are not limited to, but the main classes are manufactured products. We're all familiar, for example, if you buy new carpet, it has a smell to it. Automobiles have a new car smell, paints and glues have smell. So so many of the manufactured products we have emit volatile organic compounds. All plants and especially their flowers also emit volatile organic compounds, and that's one of the reasons we like flowers and foods and especially cooked foods. You know, we're all familiar with baked cookies, roast turkey, the lovely smells from bacon in the morning and coffee smell. And so what I'm going to focus on are the volatile organics from from food, and that, of course, you know, includes roast coffee. So the important, though, to make a note that volatile organic compounds are not all bad. They range from the noxious diesel exhaust to annoying, say, paint or glue, to pleasant, to delightful. And that would be, you know, baked breads and and coffee for some people. Next slide, please, Bill. So unfortunately, many of these volatile organics have an impact on human health. This was noted specifically with synthetic organics because the nature of these compounds were that they they were actually fairly dangerous, things like benzene, carbon tetra chloride and chloroform, a very long list of other chemicals as well. And these were identified typically in an industrial setting where people were exposed to large quantities or extended periods of time that these were were dangerous and people were experiencing health consequences. And so so as a result of that, they've been regulated in in most of the the world, throughout the world. And this, these regulations control exposure during production, distribution and use. And and I'm going into this detail because one particular compound, diacetyl, has a a fairly low exposure level, and I'm going to explain what that means. So so what these regulations involve are are estimates of exposure levels, sort of minimum exposure levels. That is, the concentrations of the volatile organics in the air, times over which someone might be exposed. It may range from hours to days to months to years. And then a a summary of the estimated potential health consequences of this exposure, usually in the form of a of a an estimate of the probability of, say, a particular health consequence like, you know, asthma. Next slide, please. So diacetyl has been mentioned by the public in particular response to this as a as a as problematic and and it is found in in a wide variety of foods, including coffee. It's it's actually very present at high concentrations in butter, cheese, yogurt and other dairy products. It's found in fermented and distilled beverages. It's found in coffee, of course. It's found in vinegar. It's found in processed tomatoes and citrus juices. And so, you know, literally every day, most of us are eating diacetyl. It's a problem, and it was noticed to be a problem back in in the early two thousands. Its use in the microwave popcorn industry and that workers at a plant in in Missouri were experiencing respiratory problems after working with microwave popcorn and assembling microwave popcorn packages for a number of years. And and so the research suggested that diacetyl was the problem and and it it became a problem in the in the in this particular production facility because the flavoring, the artificial flavoring used in microwave popcorn includes diacetyl at very high concentrations, much higher than than is found in, for example, in the in the foods that we eat. And the the workers were being exposed to this on a regular basis. And so consequently, the National Institute of Occupational Safety and Safety and Health, NIOH proposed a recommended exposure limit, an REL of five parts per billion for diacetyl. Now, this is a very, very low concentration. You know, this is, this is a concentration that's extremely hard to measure, for example. And and their their investigations resulted in 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 the the following sort of recommendation for for diacetyl, and that is that that any worker who is exposed to a diacetyl in the atmosphere for eight hours a day, five days a week for forty-five years. And they set anyone working and exposed to diacetyl for that period of time, they they recommended that that they the relative exposure limit be five parts per billion. And and that is that, so if you're in a working environment, you can you can insist and demand that that measurements be made and and, you know, the appropriate care be taken to keep the the concentration below five parts per billion. But with that kind of exposure, five parts per billion for forty-five years on a weekly basis, daily basis, that would result in a one in one thousand chance of developing a reduced lung function. And so consequently, that's now the the current regulation. And so what this means is that, you know, the the NIOH has declared that diacetyl is a low-level health risk associated with long-term chronic exposure to the diacetyl. Next, next slide, please. So diacetyl is not actually present in coffee. It is generated during the roasting process. It's it's actually an aspect of a chemical reaction which most of us are familiar with, and that is called the Browning reaction, and that's the reaction that gives rise to the colors and aromas and flavors of baked goods and cooked meats. It involves a reaction between amino acid and the sugar, and those are both present in the coffee bean. So the 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 issue, though, is the diacetyl is generated during the roasting process, but is it released during roasting? Because, you know, the specific request is is for the variance to include a roaster. And so I I identified three peer-reviewed studies from the past decade in which they went into roasting facilities in various places, either in one place over extended period of time or multiple places. And they directly measured the diacetyl concentration around the roaster, which would be sort of the, you know, the the sort of maximum, you know, level of of atmospheric diacetyl that results from the roasting. What they found was that in most of those cases, the measured diacetyl in all but one of those cases, the measured diacetyl was less than ten parts per billion. And in some cases, much less. And you can see the numbers there, one to three in one in one study between one and four, five for 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 four or five sites, and then the fifth site slightly higher, a factor of maybe three three to five higher. And then the final one in in the high single digits, eight point four parts per billion. But but what this means is that, you know, that at the site of roasting, when the diacetyl is is generated during during the process, very little of that diacetyl actually escapes the bean. Because even in the immediate vicinity of where the beans have been roasted, there is a fairly low level. It it does in in often exceed the recommended level, but it's but it's, you know, it's not a high level. And I I mentioned that because it can be fairly high. For example, anyone who was worried about diacetyl shouldn't be actually drinking coffee because the actual air above a cup of freshly brewed coffee has a diacetyl concentration of about seven parts per million. That means it's approximately one thousand times higher than the the REL, the recommended exposure lo- limit for for diacetyl. So so, you know, the 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 it's it's really, you're you're getting a much greater exposure to diacetyl in the in the in the cup of coffee that you're drinking than in in the roasting process. But even with those low levels, the the proposal will described today, will will and the next people will talk about the scrubbing process using the vortex, which will really remove a fair amount of the the diacetyl. But the most important factor is the dilution effect of the surrounding air. Next slide, please. And so I did a a quick calculation of what the di- atmospheric dilution effect on the diacetyl would be. Making some assumptions about the the functioning of the of the vortex scrubber. And then from conversations with the the manufacturers in a in about a ten-minute roast period, about approximately six thousand cubic feet of gas is released. And what I did was just assume this is released into a into a disk of air, approximately two hundred or four hundred or eight hundred or sixteen hundred feet in diameter, sorry, in radius. And then approximately forty feet thick, thick, because the the outlet pipe for the for the the roaster will be on the second floor of the building, and that'll be about twenty-five feet above the ground, so some of it will go up, you know. Some of it will diffuse. And and the point is that that even at two hundred feet away, the 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 dilution effect of the atmosphere is neither a factor of thousand. And so the five, approximately five parts per billion atmosphere of diacetyl that is going into the pipe will be diluted nearly a factor of a thousand to point zero zero six billion. And you can see in in the table how it it it's decreases even further as you go away. The school, for example, I believe, is about four hundred to five hundred feet away. So at that point, the the dilution effect would lower the diacetyl concentration to approximately one part per trillion. But it's also important to note, and I indicate on the table here, that that those concentrations are actually below the limit of detection of diacetyl because, which is about point one part per billion. And so so the 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 point is that my analysis indicates that during the roasting process, this identified problematic compound, volatile organic compound that's that's being released, will actually be fairly low at the at the point of of roasting, and then the dilution will drop it down by another factor of a thousand to fifty thousand over the course of of distributing throughout the atmosphere. And that's that's all I've got to say.
Yeah, we'd like to invite the board to ask Dr. Ludischer any questions on this, because we we recognize that diacetyl is a question that the public has. They have questions on, and we'd like to address it thoroughly. Dr. Ludischer is is an expert on on this this type of topic.
Dr. Ludischer, I do have a question. Is there any data on what volatile organic compounds, diacetyl or others are released by a restaurant?
There are some, you know, there's a fair amount of work on that, and and it's very extensive. Some restaurants are, you know, are very serious emitters of these kind of compounds. It it's 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 a recognized problem to the extent that the state of Washington has released health advisories. I don't know if it's gotten to the level of any regulation yet. But I I mentioned that diacetyl is actually fairly high concentration in butter. It actually is as a part, about one to two parts per million in butter. It it actually is one of the main compounds that gives butter its buttery taste. And when you fry butter, that diacetyl is vaporized. So if you're frying butter on the stove and, you know, you know, using it to like, you know, fry fry an egg or or fry potatoes, then you are will be exposed to diacetyl. And it's quite probable that those concentrations will far exceed the REL for for diacetyl. Because it's 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 quite possible that if you're extensively grilling, you know, heating that butter, that most of the diacetyl will actually escape from the from the liquid butter.
Would that
So the the state of Washington is is recommending, you know, that this be addressed in the food industry in Washington.
Would this also apply, say, to making french fries and would this involve just a normal restaurant operations? Other besides diacetyl?
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. A a restaurant is a is a a ver- veritable cornucopia of volatile organic compound. The 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 more that you can smell the food in a restaurant, the higher the concentration of volatile organic chemicals will be in the air. And in a place, for example, that does a lot of grilling of meat, there could be a very high concentrations of potentially problematic molecules. This is actually something that has not been addressed, and I was really pleased to see that Washington State is beginning to address this issue because for any of the workers in a restaurant, it's probably not so much a problem for people who come because they go to the restaurant, you know, once or twice a week, if that, and for a short time. But for somebody who's working an eight-hour shift, or maybe even a ten or twelve-hour shift in a restaurant, breathing in these things, they could they could literally be exposed to concentrations of diacetyl far, far in excess of what is appropriate.
Mr. Stein, can I quickly add one point to Dr. Ludischer? We have documents from the EPA Environmental Protection Agency that that cite the pounds of VOCs released per ton of coffee beans roasted and per ton of of bread baked. It's actually higher for bread than for coffee. We could provide those documents to you and and give you sites as to where it is. It's just we could spend hours talking about that today, so we had to limit what we could present. But if that would be interesting, we can send that to you, and you can see that baking bread releases more VOCs than roasting coffee. According to the EPA. I'll 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 make a note to send that to you.
Mr. Hare, are you submitting that as an exhibit? Because just sending it to Mr. Stein is not you know, giving it to the board, so.
I I don't want to delay this for another month, but i- if it's at all helpful, I can represent that I've looked at the documents and that that the VOCs are higher for baking bread than roasting coffee beans.
Well, why don't we do this? As, I mean, it's nine o'clock already. I know you have more witnesses to present. And then I think the board will need to decide how are they going to proceed? In terms of, are they going to take testimony tonight? What what's going to happen with the application? So perhaps the board can advise at that point whether um, perhaps the board can advise at that point whether they would like to see this documentation. You know, if, if in fact, the application can't be finished tonight.
Okay, we're happy to just move on to our next witness.
I, I have a question.
I have a question.
Unless there's more questions.
I just, I just a clarification, because there was a point that was made by the, um, the expert there that, um, I just wanted to make sure I understand because it seemed there's some, you know, a lot of numbers that were, that were presented and they're very, very helpful. Um, but he, he had mentioned that just in a cup of coffee that we, most, if not all of us drink at least one a day. Um, that there was, you know, uh, what the, the diacetyl, the diacetyl was coming off of that cup, cup of coffee was far in excess of anything we'd be potentially exposed to in a roasting facility.
Yes.
What he was saying.
But, yeah, by a factor of about 1,000.
Correct. So I mean, our, our, each of us are, are, are providing ourselves without, without much diacetyl on a daily basis. And it doesn't seem to be causing any great concern.
Can, can I go back one slide and point out?
Not, not an issue.
Yeah. And, and our children are around us when we're drinking.
Exactly. Typically, they're
So, or when it's being brewed in the coffee machine. So, um, okay.
I think it's this point that if, if you're, you know, maybe Dr. Ludischer could talk about this, but he pointed out that's the 45 year career. Forty hours a week. The exposure is, is where these numbers relate, and we're not drinking coffee like that.
Correct. And that's what I'm saying.
Is that diacetyl is not a toxic compound. It's a reactive compound. It reacts with the proteins in our body and lots and lots of other things do that as well. And we have the ability to, to accommodate that. But, but when, when you breathe it in, it, it attacks some particular protein or proteins in your lungs. And eventually it gets to the point where, and what it's doing, it's actually reacting with, it's chemically reacting with those proteins and probably deactivating them in some way. And eventually your body gets to the point where you, it can't deal with that abuse on a daily basis.
Sure. I just, I just felt it was a relevant, it was a very simple explanation and creates a kind of a, a, a level playing field in which to move forward, understand these levels of, of this compound.
And, and that's a really good point that you're making. We appreciate that.
And I have a question or two questions. First one, um, I'm trying to understand this. The, the, the diacidal is in part burned off through roasting? And if so, why am I breathing it tomorrow morning?
No, it's, it's not, it's not driven off by roasting. What it is, is the roasting process, the heat is generating, it's, you know, the chemical reactions go faster and it changes the position of equilibrium as well as the, with the temperature. But primarily, it's a, it's a, it's a, a reaction that goes faster with higher temperature. And so you're heating these beans. And this, 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 um, browning reaction is happening faster. And so inside the bean, you're making diacetyl. But the point is, it's not coming out. It's actually not coming out primarily until you grind it. And when you grind it, then it's now able to be released, but it also then can be extracted with the water you, you pour through the, the ground coffee. And then the diacetyl can go into the coffee itself and, and be part of the, the beverage you're drinking. But then it will evaporate from the surface. And the point is right above the surface in that sort of inch above the top of the cup, the concentrations of diacetyl are 1,000 times higher than the R E L, than the five parts per billion R E L.
Okay, um, you're, you're the expert, uh, the little bit of reading I had done. I had gotten the impression or interpretation that it was burned off or in part, uh, released in the roasting process. You say it's not, okay.
Um, it's, uh, maybe 1% might be released. You know, ju- just because the bean itself has a surface area and it will, it will evaporate diacetyl from its surface. But when you grind it, of course, now the surface area is increased 1,000 to 10,000 full, because it's all small pieces.
Okay, so just some minor part is released.
That, that helps. Very small, at least during roasting.
Fine. In, in the studies, you know, with the roasters, um, you presented to us that in, in the 219, that one roaster that was 13 to 27, was there any explanation on why, um, that was so?
Why, why that was an oddity? And I, I don't recall, um, that, you know, the, why they, why they've specifically identified, what, what, whether they came up with an explanation for why that was, was, was so high. No, I can't recall. Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I noticed there, you didn't give any explanation for it. So.
Yeah.
I guess. Okay, thanks.
Can I ask a question? So I just wanted to confirm, uh, the concentration levels that you, uh, that, that you listed. Yeah. Um, is this assuming this, a similar afterburner treatment system as is being proposed?
No, 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 no. Th- this is just basically what I did was I, I, um, the, the dilution effect is just geometry.
Okay, so this isn't without
Yeah, that, that, nothing to do with anything other than the particular model, I assume, which was a disc, you know, of certain dimensions. Um, uh, uh, and then, and then I, I used five parts per million because that's, you know, sort of, you know, a, a good estimate for the kind of numbers that I, I found that would be present in the, in the affluent gas.
Okay.
I have a, a question that maybe, am I on mute? No. Okay, a question that may be answered by further witnesses, and that is, apart from diacetyl, uh, is there a particular matter released during the roasting process that would affect, you know, very small particles that can enter the lung and cause
There, there is, and that will be addressed by the vortex.
Thank you.
Is especially good at, at removing the particulate matter.
So, um, can I inter- interject just for one moment there, um, Richard? So the, um, the chart, um, that's showing on the screen here, it, it was mentioned, so this is without the vortex, which, um, inherently means that you're getting to a parts per billion or, or million that's, that's safe, um, without the, the use of the, is, is that accurate?
Yeah, that, that's what I, I basically assumed that, that there, the scrubbing is not operational. This is just coming out of the stack. But of course, with a scrubber, that number would be smaller.
Okay. And I, I would just add, I, I'm not 100% sure, Michael, but it's, it's, it's very likely that those, uh, outliers were roasting, uh, flavored coffee, which we, uh, we know releases, um, uh, a more significant amount of
No, no, that, that, that doesn't explain it because they actually factored that in. They, 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 they had roasters flavored and unflavored, and they separated that data.
Okay.
Yeah.
If, unless there's other questions, I'd like to then move on to the, the folks from Vortex.
Any, any other questions? Okay, move on.
I'm actually going to kick, I'm going to actually kick this section off, uh, just for, I'll keep it real brief. Um, it, this is a change, uh, recognizing it, uh, after the, the last meeting, we, um, we were scratching our heads because we were talking about putting in a, um, some technology that uses fossil fuels to burn off something that we didn't feel was harmful. And so we were uh, suggesting something that we, um, uh, to everything I said earlier is the antithesis of what we're trying to accomplish. And, um, we started talking to, uh, other roasters and, uh, uh, we, we have, uh, engaged, uh, Vortex, who's going to be here in a moment, uh, to, uh, talk about the technology. But this is a much better solution in our eyes, in keeping with what we're looking to accomplish. Um, you know, on the, on the sustainability side, uh, they have over 200 installations across the world. Uh, so they've got a lot of experience, uh, and you'll see here in a moment, everywhere from, uh, Tokyo to Beverly Hills to Montclair, New Jersey. Uh, this technology is in play. So, uh, we're, we're pretty excited about it. And, uh, hopefully, uh, can, uh, uh, have a, a clear understanding here of the technology for you all. So I'll, I'll hand it off to, uh, Ren.
So, I'd like to introduce, uh, Dr. Tubergen. He is the
Ron first. Oh, Ron first. Ron, uh, Clies is the, the president of Verta- Vortex. And would you tell us a little bit about yourself and your company?
I need to swear you in, Mr. Clies. Where are you?
Right here.
There you go.
My screen.
Yeah. Do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, I've been involved in startups most of my professional life. Uh, done a number of companies, one of which was headquartered in New Jersey. I've always loved startups that solve unique problems. Uh, a few years back, uh, 2016, to be exact, I approached Dr. Tubergen with a concept for a wet scrubber to be applied to coffee roasters. The idea was how do we reduce the emissions that come out, the, the visible emissions as well as the VOCs? How do we reduce them so that the local people are not troubled by any nuisance odors? And at the same time, we're not punishing the planet by burning massive amounts of natural gas to incinerate smoke and odor. Uh, so Dr. Tubergen is going to tell you what he came up with. I wanted to mention at the start, you look for the easy plays in basketball, you look for the easy plays in business. My first three customers couldn't have been worse. First one, Beverly Hills, California, where if you want to be around people who take offense at everything that they don't like, it's Beverly Hills. Our own roasting has been there for six years with zero complaints. And they have multimillion dollar homes a half a block away. Uh, the second one that we did was in, uh, Berkeley, California. And, and that was for a company that has several roasters right across the street was a stick built Victorian. Uh, the lady who owned the house complained. She complained enough that the air quality people said, we're going to close you now. They installed the vortex and then they called air quality three months later and said, hey, come out and inspect. They said, we don't come out unless there's a complaint. The, that was five years ago. No complaints. The worst one that I can think of was in Tokyo where Makenasty Coffee installed in a little one story cafe. Right next door to them is a multiple story. I think it's a 12 story apartment building with open air balconies right above the roof of Makenasty. And we thought this is never going to work. That was five years ago. No complaints. So I mentioned this because we wanted to do one thing that's consistent with what Jonathan and his business partners want to do. We wanted to help coffee roasting become a poster child for environmental responsibility. That responsibility is first to their neighbors. Do no harm to your neighbors. And second to your planet, reduce your carbon footprint. We've been able to achieve that with the technology we've got. Uh, as of, uh, two weeks ago, we hit our sixth continent. We had our first installation, uh, in Kenya, Africa. So the, the, the product is being very well received by the roasting community. It's achieving what Dr. Tubergen and I wanted it to achieve as a business. Uh, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ren.
You're going to have to swear me in and Bill, you got to move to the next slide.
Okay.
Mr. Tubergen, do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
Dr. Tubergen, can you please tell us a little bit about your background, your qualifications and experience, especially as you're like, coffee roasting?
Yeah, I've got a, a PhD in, uh, biomechanics from Purdue University. Um, I went on after that and I've spent most of my career in product development. Um, I started in coffee specifically in 2009 as one of the consulting jobs that I did. Um, and so that was the development of a roaster and that roaster used cyclone technology um, in its process. Um, since then, I've gone on, we, Ron and I have worked together on this project. Um, I currently, as my full-time job, I teach, uh, mechanical and biome, um, sorry, mechanical and mechatronics engineering at Calvin University in Grand Rapids, Michigan.
Would, would you please proceed with your, your presentation then?
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to make it brief, uh, or try to, uh, and, and open it up for questions. Um, I'm assuming you're familiar and you may not want to know about the afterburner technology. What we're proposing, what we've built and created is a system that works similar to a dust collection system that you've seen in wood shops or sandblasting equipment or elsewhere. The key is what Ron alluded to, that's a wet scrubber. So going back to, uh, Richard's, uh, ri- his testimony, the volatile organic gases that are problematic in coffee exhaust are, they have boiled off during the process of roasting. And what we do is by adding water, we quench those oils so that they drop below their, the temperature at which they boil off. So like for water, that would be at 100 degrees, um, Celsius, sorry, 212 Fahrenheit. For these oils, many of them are at about 140 degrees Fahrenheit. So by adding water at approximately 90 degrees, we get those oils to come down below the temperature where they go back into a liquid phase. And then they're just like a dust particle or a chaff particle that comes off in the roasting process. They have a much higher density than the air that they are entrained in. And the centripetal forces of the cyclone will sling those to the outside. They get caught on the outside of the cyclone and they run down to the bottom. So what you're seeing in the figure is hot, dirty air is going to enter through that path, uh, on the backside of the cyclone. That air will then rotate through the cyclone where it's being quenched with air. The particles of oil, of volatile organics and dust and chaff will go to the sides and then they're washed down into the catch basin. The catch basin drains, that's number four. That's drained into, uh, number, item number six, which is a bucket where that water is recyc- recycled. And we continue that process. That's where it's room temperature water when we start, but as that process goes, it eventually warms up to about 90 degrees. That process allows us to capture most of the VOCs, most of the dust, uh, and, and the particulates that you had asked about. Uh, any of the solids that are in that exhaust stream. So what you get as a result of our process is the warm, clean air that comes out of the central portion of our product, uh, at item three is 100% saturated with moisture with, it's 100% relative humidity. So when that hits the air as it exits the building, exits the chimney stack, um, that will, that steam will essentially coalesce itself into a nice huffy stream of, of steam. Uh, and then that will dissipate, uh, as it's carried aloft in the wind and, um, travels away from this chimney.
How high is the chimney?
Um, that depends on the application and I'm not familiar with what's being proposed here.
I believe it's a, if I'm remembering my number right, it's either an eight foot above the roof um, or a three foot with an eight inch diameter. I, I had the two numbers backwards.
We had it in your first presentation. I need to revisit that to give an exact number.
But it's between three and eight feet above the top of the building.
And, and you have the houses immediately behind the facility. Do you have any idea what the roof heights are of those relative to the top of the stack?
No, but I, I know that, and I could try to pull up the drawing, but the building, the, the part of the building where the stack is, there is a second floor adjacent to it between it and the neighboring houses. And I recall from the drawings that the stack doesn't exceed the second floor, so there would be some blockage of that steam by the building. And that, so the exit of that pipe is close, you know, within a couple of feet, linear feet from the parking lot. But a, a greater distance from the, the far side of the building with an intervening second floor.
So the second floor blocks the exhaust from the stack. It's, it's, the second floor is between the stack and the homes.
Yes, sir.
I, I have a question about the, how efficient this is in terms of getting rid of the fine particulates. In terms of getting rid of the fine particulates. But so I believe those are, you know, can be quite noxious and I believe they're regulated. How does this comport with the the maximum permitted? Particulate concentrations in in this this particular vortex? Technology in practice, has it been measured?
Well, yeah, actually, that's a great question because every roasting process produces um produces those. What would be considered either a PM ten or a PM two point five particle? Those are relating to the size of the particle in microns. Um, those are regulated by the EPA as well as by California Air Resources Board Puget Sound. Um, the various different air quality districts that exist on the West Coast. All of those are regulated. Every roaster has to address that and they do that with a dry cyclone, which is less efficient than our wet cyclone. The wet cyclone has the advantage of not only do we have the cyclonic effect where we. Are using it like a standard dust collector in a woodshop. But we also have the water spray which can capture the particles directly, that is. Us uh, one of these PM two point five particles, we'll say, can hit. A water droplet and then be captured by that water droplet where otherwise it might not have been large enough. To be captured by the cyclone. Cyclones are more efficient with larger particles. Um, but the cyclone technology is the. Is what is used in every coffee roaster to capture the solid particles prior to going to. Um, the competitive top technology of the of an afterburner, so um, we have no, no issues with the solid particles.
Is? What power is this piece of equipment?
So uh essentially, we need. The coffee roasters will all have a fan that pushes air out of the roast chamber so that they can introduce heat into the roasting chamber. And so sometimes that fan is large enough that we can drive our system just on the fan from the roaster. Other times we need to put a second auxiliary fan to help boost that pressure. Um. That handles the airflow side of it, that's one energy source. There is also a pump that is used to recirculate the water taken from the catch basin at the bottom. That was item six on the previous slide. You can see in this slide, the pump and then that water gets returned up at high pressure to the nozzles at the top. Where it's atomized and sprayed in at the top, so uh, the pump at the bottom is a uh standard hundred and ten horsepower. It's specified just for this application, but it's a standard pump.
So the the water at the bottom is being recycled through the cyclone again.
Correct.
And then the the air is being exhausted. Or that vapor is being exhausted. What is this? What kind of noise does this thing generate?
Well, you you've got two things competing that are both making noise. One, you've got a pretty good airflow, um, and and I think if you run a dust collection in a shop. Um, or even that the the Home Depots will will often run a a dust collection or similar system. They can be loud, um, they can be north of seventy decibels. And then on top of that, you also have the pump in the water system which will produce um. Probably another seventy decibels. When you add that together, that's a nonlinear scale, so you get to about seventy four. There's some additional noise created by the atomization of the water within the chamber itself. Um, some pressure levels I've measured have been in the seventy. Depending on the water pressure that you're operating the system at, um, can be between seventy and seventy six decibels.
And that would, that would be during the, that would be consistent during the entire roasting process?
Yes, yes. Yes.
And this piece of equipment is in the same room as the roasters?
It can be, yes. I think that is the intention in this installation. It can also be located remotely.
Okay. But it could be in a room that it would accommodate the noise.
Well, and roasters are not. Necessarily quiet either, so these are all below, these are all below standard industrial equipment.
But what, well, we we can talk about the? The decibels that the roasters operate under. So we can get a total idea of what type of noise this is going to generate for the hour and fifty two minutes.
Yeah, I think you should um. It it will not be as bad as as a as a line of comparison, I and because I can throw around decibels. But it would not be as bad as a as a shop vac. A shop vac is running between eighty to eighty four decibels. Almost really twice as loud as what the combined roaster. And vortex system would run at.
Sir, just for clarification for the board, so this decibel level, you're measuring that in the room?
Yes.
Not exterior, not outside?
No, no, not outside, no, next to the unit.
Do you have any idea what the decibel level would be? Um. The level that anybody, the the level outside the building, what residents and other neighbors would hear?
It will um. No, I don't. The the simple answer to that is it would depend on the construction techniques. If the walls are built with fiberglass insulation, I would expect it to drop by fifteen decibels before it leaves that room. Um, I am not familiar enough with the plans on that actual on on the build out plan. But as I recall, I think you're talking about an interior room which would create one level of. Abatement for the sound. And then there's another layer of the exterior wall that would create another layer of abatement for the sound, so. Um, i- it might not be. Even discernible by the time it reaches, by the time you're on the outside of the building.
But the exhaust is going to be open to the air at the top.
Correct, the fan is where it's making the noise and that's um. Yeah, that will, that will probably be close to a bathroom fan in terms of its noise level.
But the noise that'll come through that stack. Won't that resonate from the equipment and the roasters and everything? Through the stack?
Um, typically what you have in um. Again, I wasn't thinking about that particular stack, not thinking about that installation. Um, what you can see behind me is my chimney with my stack. I've got about a twenty foot run of eight inch exhaust and because of the linear nature of the way. Sound travels in that tube, it actually does some amount of cancellation and so it is not um. You can hear it outside, but it is not. It's not like it is inside. It's significantly, it has been significantly abated.
But inside, it's pretty noisy is what you're saying.
Inside, it's um. Yeah, it's not as loud. When I'm roasting, it is not as loud as um woodworking equipment. I think that's a reasonable, that that's. That is significantly louder than the coffee roasting equipment that I'm using. I can carry on a conversation in the room. Not at, not quite at normal voice levels, um. But it's it's possible to carry on a conversation in the room with the equipment running. It's not true for woodworking equipment.
But Dr. I wonder for purposes of comparison, would you relate it to the noise of a? Gas powered leaf blower?
No, I wouldn't compare it at all. It's not even close. No, that's another level above woodworking equipment in my mind. Gas power.
A- and just to speak to the the build out, yes, it's in an interior room uh separate from the uh. If you remember, I I showed the cafe and and there's uh concrete, the exterior walls are concrete, so you. Um, yeah.
I have a question. Um, for the expert, um. Trying to make sure I understand this with the chaff. With these vortex system. It's ca- it's pushed back down by the cyclone. And then it's watered down. Am I understanding that correct?
Captured in the water is that water washes it off the sides of the cyclone and it it goes into what we're calling a catch basin. From the catch basin, it goes through a weir and there's a filter that separates that from the water. So that the water can be reused. Where there's a screen, actually, there's, there's three levels of screening that take place to keep the water clean so that it can be reused. And yet we capture the the chaff effectively.
And am I understand correctly from? Earlier presentations with the afterburner system, the chaff particles were basically just burnt. By the afterburner, is that correct?
That is my understanding. I'm not, I I would not represent myself as an expert on afterburners. That's my understanding.
That's, that's what I thought I read, uh.
Yeah.
Another question, there was a statement, I think the previous expert. That this system actually captures the CO two. And.
Correct.
If I'm remembering correctly from the afterburner system and um, somebody will have to tell me if I'm remembering correct. CO two is released into the air or somehow exhausts.
Well. CO two is a very. Yeah, CO two is a very interesting topic in that. The afterburner um uses, uses natural gas or a propane to create that flame source which is burning things off. And they are producing um a very large amount of CO two that exits into the atmosphere. Because that's the way their system operates. We still. Um, we are not absolutely clean because we have the electric motor that drives the pump to recycle. So if you assume that comes from what we've termed it as a dirty fuel. Um, it's dirty electric that it comes from a gas fired. Uh, electric facility, we produce about two percent of the CO two that an afterburner creates. So if CO two is your interest. We're at about two percent of the CO two of an afterburner, about one percent of the total cost of operating an afterburner.
Okay.
Alright. Can I ask Dr. Tubber a quick question about the noise issue? You've, I understand you've installed about two hundred of these vortex systems. Do you have any noise complaints?
Um, I'm gonna turn that over to Ron because he deals more with the customers than I do of the science, so.
Yeah, you'll get a better answer. The the answer to that question is from the outside. There's never been a complaint about noise. From the inside. Uh, some customers will wear. Uh, noise canceling earphones. When they're operating the equipment. But that's because they've got much more than just a vortex. They've got the roaster going. They'll have a what's called a destoner going which creates an enormous amount of noise. Uh, it's a vacuum that lifts the roasted beans and leaves the detritus in the bottom. It takes a tremendous amount of force to do that. So. There's, there's not a complaint about the vortex itself. The complaint is about, or not the complaint, but the concern is, okay, I'm gonna put on. Noise canceling earphones because I got all this stuff going on around me. But again, outside the building. We have, we're, I know, I'm not aware of any customer who's ever said, oh, my gosh, I gotta shut down because the neighbors hate the noise.
But inside, but inside the facility. Is it compatible, maybe this isn't uh for you to answer, but is this compatible with? Roasting when P, when customers are in the, in the shop?
Yes.
Inside?
Yes, if uh. Uh, Mr. Cohen, I I believe fifty percent of our installations are what are called roastery cafes. And the roasters in plain view of uh of patrons in the cafe. There may be one window. Uh, separating them. A single pane glass window. But they're in there, they're operating regularly. Uh, and again, uh, nobody has. Taken their vortex out of commission because of a noise issue with the vortex.
A motorcycle engine is at about ninety five decibels. And you know, the cumulative effect of all the equipment running in that room. Is going to be above that?
No, no. It won't be above eighty.
Yes.
Okay. Eighty is still pretty high. Normal conversation is sixty.
Yes, uh, eighty is eighty is the limit imposed, uh, I believe that's the limit imposed by OSHA for continuous exposure.
Yeah. And according to Cornell University School of of Nutrition, where they studied. Background noises in cafes and restaurants. Their take on it is seventy four decibels is a desirable level of background noise or white noise. And the reason for that is people are comfortable conversing with each other, with others around them with that level of white noise.
And again, this is, that roaster is in an enclosed room.
Yeah.
Separated by.
Okay. Thank you. If I, if I may, I wanted to just mention something to Michael. You'd asked about why there was that one roaster that emitted so much. Um. Diacetyl? And the answer to that is roasters are not tightly. Contained uh uh. If if they're maintained properly. They leak very, very little. But sometimes you get a roaster where somebody has not paid attention to their maintenance and it's leaking all over the place. Uh, I've gone in myself and seen those and and. It smells bad and I'll often say to the roast master, I think you need to close this down and maintain your machine.
Yeah, I I would think a good study would have. Get that. And footnote it, I, you know, I can believe that happens. I don't know that that happened in this instance. And I don't believe you do either. Because it wasn't cited. Nothing was said. In in the, in the study.
If if the, if the person with the instrument does not understand the process. They'll, they'll take a high measurement and they won't be thinking, wow, this machine has terrible tolerances that hasn't been maintained.
Well, if we can move on.
I think, yeah, we can move on. I think that concludes. What we've got on the vortex, I I think, Bill, if you want to keep moving forward.
I I I do think some of the questions in the past were how do we know that the system is working? And maybe Ren, you could address that in thirty seconds or less about the. This particular slide.
Yeah, keys to the system operating are the water flow is being maintained and that we're getting the appropriate amount of cooling. And so you can see on the picture that it's called out where the, there's a thermometer on the stack dump. And as long as we remain at, get that temperature to remain below. That boiling point for the majority of the VOCs, we know that that system is operating well. A key part of that is making sure that our water pressure is up above forty PSI. So we've got good spray for rinsing down the sides and capturing particles as they go through the cyclone.
So it's easy to see if the machine is functioning.
Correct.
So I think we're ready to to move on now if uh. Unless anybody has further questions for Dr. Tubergen.
Just a quick, what's the height of that piece of equipment? Just in terms of scale. How tall is it?
Five and a half. Um, a five and a half, it depends on where you, because the chimney is going to go up from there, so yeah, five and a half.
Okay, thank you.
And where's the input? Where where is the, where where is the pipe from the roaster going into this machine?
Uh, that's the one that's hor- that's looking mostly horizontal. And comes in on the side right underneath the pressure gauge.
Okay, so that's.
And then the chimney goes out the center at the top.
Okay, so this is mounted on the ground?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Okay, please continue.
So I'm just going to briefly note that the Princeton Department of Health has approved the use. Uh, for roasting and arrest retail at the this uh facility, they didn't raise any concerns with what we proposed. Roasting and retail. We've also contacted the NJDP to determine permit ac- applicability. And they came back and explained that because the roaster will have a capacity to handle fifty pounds of raw material in an hour. An air permit is required, so we will apply for that permit. But it should be noted that this requirement. For a permit is not a function of roasting coffee beans, but it's the capacity of the equipment. Whether you're baking bread, roasting beans or some other material. It's the ability. To handle fifty pounds in an hour. Leads to the permit, so they don't even talk about the absolute, just the fifty pound capacity.
Just a clarification, did you get anything from the health department?
Uh, we do, and it's shown here on the right, um. I I can. Basically, they gave a permit to move forward.
That's our permit for the space, yeah.
Okay, Derek, same question. Did you get anything from the health department, any, anything in writing about this?
Uh, no, I didn't.
Okay. So. This is like application. this is like application for food establishment plan review. That's all I can read on it. Maybe somebody else can read more.
Yeah.
I, I, I can't see what it says, but Mr. Here, you're saying that you have approval Princeton Health Department operate.
I can't tell the completeness of what they're approving.
Well, I mean, I, I can't read it either, so.
Yeah.
We can agree on it. That's just, that is just our, you know, the approval that we received for the use, the space in the manner that we had applied for.
Which included the coffee roasting.
And it goes, I think, directly to the building.
You know, if, if, if the application is approved by the board, the board wishes this can always be a condition of approval. I'm not even sure we have the complete. I don't know how much you would have to expand it to see the entire document or to see actually what the application was.
Yeah.
Looks like part of it is still.
It would be nice if it were, if we could see the whole page.
And it would be nice if the public can see everything first, too. There's, there's a whole lot of information coming out tonight. New presentations and documents you can send Mr. Stein. But there's a public out there, both pro and con. But especially the concerned neighbors that, you know, they don't have any time to digest this.
Okay, well, we'd, we'd like to move on.
Neither do I, actually.
What, what we can see is that it's, I mean, I don't, this is, there's so many things, I, I, I don't know what an application for food establishment plan review encompasses. There's, it's not, maybe it says on the bottom of the page and it's okay to also roast beans, but absent that, I know if it, if that's what they intended. I'm not familiar with how they.
Yeah, just basically. I'm comfortable, I'm very comfortable making this a condition of approval if that's, you know, we can certainly provide the document and make it a condition of approval 100%.
I'm with you in what you just said, Michael.
I agree, I agree also.
Digest and the public and.
Yeah, a lot of this should have been in a package to us. I try to do my research before the meeting.
Let's keep moving on tonight and see how far we get. And to see if we're gonna get through everything and, and then we'll come back and revisit this additional information they presented this evening.
Okay, I'd like to move on then and introduce Susan Favate. She's a principal with BFJ Planning and has experienced, a lot of experience here in New Jersey, including in Princeton. So I will turn that over to her now.
Eve, could we take a five minute break before we get into this? It's quarter to 10 and.
Yeah, certainly. Okay, it's, it is 9:46, so we'll break and come back at 9:51. Okay, five minutes.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Okay, Eve's back, so I think we're all here.
Yes, everyone is back.
Okay, let's continue. Okay.
So we'd like to introduce Susan Favate, a principal of BFJ Planning, who's gonna talk about the variance aspects of this request.
Okay.
Susan, would you mind introducing yourself and tell us a bit about your qualifications?
Sure, thanks. I have a degree, a master's degree in urban planning.
Miss Montague, before you continue, we need to swear you in. Do you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have a master's degree in urban planning from New York University. I have 17 years of professional planning experience throughout the region. I'm a principal, as, as Mr. Herr indicated, with BFJ Planning. We are a consulting firm, really acting throughout the region since 1980. We've actually done a lot of work here in Princeton as well. I'm a licensed professional planner in New Jersey and a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners. I have testified before numerous planning and zoning boards in New Jersey, including just last month in Princeton before the planning board for an application just a few blocks away on Witherspoon. So I'm familiar with the area in Princeton as well. And then lastly, I'm a member of my own planning board over in Chatham Borough the last 14 years.
We will accept you as an expert.
Great, thank you. I'm here for the planning testimony on the, the two variances requested, which I'm sure you all remember. But as a refresher, if there's a use variance, because the designated use that's been determined by your zoning officer is manufacturing and that is not permitted in this zone or in most zones in Princeton. And then there is also a bulk variance requirement for the lack of a loading space where, where one loading space is required and none are proposed. So I'm gonna speak to these two variances, really starting with the use variance. So next slide, please. And this is a lot of words. I'm not gonna read these, but I, I will touch on a lot of these. You know, in order to, to prove or to justify the criteria for a use variance, one of the things you have to indicate is, what are the special reasons that justify that requested relief? So you've, you've heard a lot of the reasoning here throughout the evening, the benefits of this application. Just to recap, you know, one of the main benefits is that it does bring the roasting operation a lot closer to the customer base, which is, you know, entirely local to Princeton. It's serving businesses that are already here, that are already being served by this roasting operation. But it's reducing that distance in terms of deliveries, which creates a lot of efficiencies in the supply chain. And it's also very much in keeping with the applicants and also sustainable Princeton's general mission for enhancing sustainability. It reduces the drive time and the distance and the frequency of those deliveries, as you've heard. It also establishes local jobs for this coffee shop beyond what would otherwise be proposed if there were no roasting operation. And it continues to support businesses that are already here and jobs that are already here. So the existing coffee shop, as well as the local restaurants who are being supplied with coffee. As you heard from the applicant, the co-owner, it is really intended to create an artisanal coffee experience that is quite unique to Princeton. It's not novel for the overall region and more urbanized areas, but it's definitely unique here in the sense that it's connecting the customers to their local product that is actually being produced here. And in a highly competitive retail and service market like Princeton, this type of experience is really becoming increasingly important. It's a way that small businesses set themselves apart. And they're creating a, a type of environment and a type of experience that is not, not found everywhere. So we as planners are seeing this more and more. We're seeing more and more artisan manufacturing where something is produced in the same space as it's sold. And that can happen increasingly because of technology like you've heard tonight, where it really does mitigate any potential negative impacts. We're actually recommending this type of situation a lot to our municipal clients because it's a great way to fill spaces in the downtowns and business areas that might be struggling to find tenants. It's a great way to provide connection to the community and establish a sense of place. Unfortunately, it's a situation that's not contemplated by a lot of traditional zones. And so that is the case here. So that, that's essentially why we're asking for this variance. But when you look at these, these number of benefits that are in this first bullet, they really are not possible if the roasting, roasting operation is not within the coffee shop. It doesn't accrue in the same way. And the site becomes just less attractive for a coffee shop. It's not for this applicant. It's not fulfilling the, the need that they've identified. So second element of the criteria is, is why, why would strict application of this zoning deprive the applicant of this reasonable use? Well, it's clearly not permitted because it's been determined to be manufacturing use. And that is very clear from your zoning officer's memo. What is interesting is that Princeton doesn't actually define what manufacturing is. So we're left to, to see, see what the, the interpretation is based on other things that they prohibit. So when you look at the zoning code and the section that prohibits manufacturing, except in very limited ways, there are other things that are prohibited that are kind of in the same category. Things like slaughterhouses and piggies and quarries, junkyards. Now, these are clearly activities that provide great potential for nuisances, for noxious things happening offsite. And they're, they're clearly on a par with a level of manufacturing that I think is more tantamount to a factory, a large-scale industrial operation. That is just not the case here. What we're talking about is 154 square feet within a coffee shop. It's essentially the size of a bedroom. It is, it is a micro operation. And it is not something that is really at all on the same par as, you know, a heavy manufacturing use. However, in the absence of, of more detailed zoning, that is what we're dealing with. So that is why strictly applying the zoning as it exists really would deprive this, this potential use. So then the final piece of, of the use variance criteria is, is the negative criteria. Can this be granted? Can this request really be granted without impairing the, the public good and the master plan? Okay, so I think we've shown repeatedly throughout this evening, both through explanation of the science of coffee roasting and the technology that the applicant is proposing to use, that we don't see any negative impacts outside of the facility in terms of air quality that cannot be fully mitigated. And, and that's particularly true when you're looking at everything that else that is going on in the vicinity. You've got just daily traffic. You've got other restaurants in the area that are, are emitting things. You've got the DPW facility next door. You've got homes that grill periodically. It's just, it's an environment where things are always happening in terms of, you know, VOCs, particulates. It's happening really in, in any community like this. So we don't think that this is anything beyond what is a normal day-to-day experience for most folks. This project, as you just heard, does require a permit from NJDP. And it will be, will be monitored on an ongoing basis by the health department. So that should give some assurance that there are agencies who are looking at this. They're, they're going to address anything very quickly that comes and we don't expect that anything will come up in terms of air quality, but it would be quickly addressed if, if need be by those agencies. And then when we look at Princeton's master plan, both the adopted documents and then the in-progress master plan that you're working on right now, we have reviewed that to see what it says about, you know, businesses and, and things like this. There is support in your adopted plans for maintaining a diversity of uses, supporting diversity of business uses in particular, but also maintaining the scale of existing uses. Then when we look at the outreach that's been done so far for your current master plan, it's again, not yet adopted, but it's pretty clear to see where the community is falling on things like this. And one of the things that the communities identified as part of that process is a need to introduce new uses and new activities in the business zones to support their vitality. So we do think that this proposed use is consistent both with both of those goals, with maintaining the scale of existing uses, but also introducing new activities and, and supporting existing business zones. It's entirely appropriate and consistent with the scale of uses that are in the B1 zone in terms of small offices, small restaurants, personal services type uses, and it's consistent with what's already in the building itself on the site. So in summary, on the use variance, we, we do not believe that there is anything negative that would outweigh the positive impacts of granting this variance. And in fact, it's quite the opposite. The, the benefits of granting this variance would outweigh any potential detriments. Okay, so on the next slide, moving on to the bulk variance, the loading variance. As, as you all recall, I think from the first meeting and the correspondence from your staff, there was a loading variance that was previously granted to this property as part of the initial site plan review, site, site plan approval. It's required here because it's, it's been determined to be sort of an expansion of that non-conformity. There is no loading space there now to serve those, those tenants of the building and then none is proposed. So the situation would not change. We do see that the operations that are proposed here in terms of coffee and the roasting facility would generate less loading activity than a lot of the uses that are there now. Because of the very limited deliveries, you, you've heard testimony tonight and at the prior meeting that we're looking at about, you know, two to three times a year for the deliveries from the port. And that would be a typical box truck sized truck, which is consistent with, I think, what is already serving the site. But again, a very limited frequency, two to three times a year. So that can be very well managed with the other tenants on the site and the surrounding neighborhood as well. with the other tenants on the site and the surrounding neighborhood as well. It can be managed to avoid disruption in the vicinity. And the remaining deliveries, as they go out, as the roasted coffee goes out to the other coffee shop and the restaurants, now that's all happening with an SUV-type vehicle, which is really consistent with what a customer's vehicle would be. And again, fairly infrequent loading or delivery areas. So we actually don't think that, you know, a dedicated loading space is even needed for this operation. Okay, because of the infrequent deliveries and the size of the trucks that are being used. So in summary, on the loading variance, we believe that the benefits of granting this variance to facilitate this use do outweigh any potential detriments, and that the variance can be granted without impairing the intent of both the master plan and the zoning regulations. That, I believe, is it for my testimony. I hope that was brief. I know it's getting late. I'll be happy to entertain questions.
Yeah, I have a question. You said early on, situations like this are coming up more and more with existing codes. You said you're recommending to some of your municipal clients, or many of them, to do what?
To include things like a coffee roaster in the same place that you sell the coffee, or a small clothing manufacturer, you know, hand clothing. They make it in the same place that they sell it. So it's called artisan manufacturing. And, you know, I think historically, manufacturing was segregated from everything else because it was considered so noxious, because it was large-scale. You often had the, you know, the noise, the fumes. And when you're looking at this very small-scale type of artisan manufacturing, that's just really not the case. And certainly, when you can mitigate any negative potential impacts with things like the Vortex technology. So we do think that this type of use is increasingly becoming quite appropriate for downtowns, as well as other business areas like this one.
So your question, you're recommending that they change the code?
Yes. Yeah, that's a big part of modernizing zoning codes these days, is to be a bit more flexible. When you're looking at how tough of a retail environment it is and how downtowns are struggling to compete with Amazon and other factors, this is one way that downtowns are increasingly looking to compete and to be something different that you can't find somewhere else. And the zoning often doesn't allow it, so we're just recommending modernizing.
Yeah, and that's kind of consistent with my thinking, that the town should decide if they want to change the code, and that not necessarily it's on the zoning board to grant many variances when the code change is actually the thing that needs to happen.
Right, I hear what you're saying. Unfortunately, yeah, unfortunately, you can't always anticipate every situation, and sometimes you're faced with...
You're recommending to your municipal clients the right thing to do.
Thank you.
Ms. Favate, I had a question, and it's really more along the lines of clarification for the board. Your testimony, well, let me rephrase that. You are opining that the site is particularly suited to this use? Could you explain that again, why you feel the site? And I'm not really talking about the fact that the applicant wants to have a coffee shop there, or that if they can't do this and they don't want to have a coffee shop, is there something about the site that is particularly suited to this?
I think the site is generally attractive as a potential coffee shop, and I think beyond that, the building and space itself lends more storage room. I think you heard that earlier in the presentation tonight and perhaps in previous meetings. They're able to store more of the green beans at a time than they are at their current facility that they're renting out. So they're able to reduce their deliveries to and from the port, which reduces the drive time, the distance, the environmental impact of those trips to and from. So the space is very attractive for them as a roasting operation, as well as the coffee shop, because it lends itself to that additional room for storage and the floor plan that you saw early on in the presentation, that it can be both a shop and a small roasting room with storage area.
And you're suggesting, though, is that this roasting use is incidental to the coffee shop?
Yeah, I believe that when you look at the scale of the roasting part relative to the rest of the, you know, the retail facility, the coffee shop, it really is accessory in terms of it's not permitted, it's not the principal permitted use. It's not the primary use here. It is largely serving the retail use, both here and some very close by other businesses that it's serving.
Thank you.
Do you think that the, do you think that the the residential component, which is a little different than a typical downtown situation where we have single-family houses very close, do you think that presents a problem?
I don't, because I think in many cases throughout the state and the region, you have downtowns that are actually abutting right next to single-family neighborhoods. My town in particular, we have restaurants that are, you know, thirty feet from a house, and they have a van, and, you know, these things can be managed, and it's sort of part of living near a business zone, that you're going to have uses there that I think can coexist if they're properly managed, and I believe that this use will be.
Okay, I mean, it's manufacturing as opposed to just pure retail. I understand what you're saying.
It's not a factory, is what I would say. It's a small room within shop.
Right, right. It's, yeah.
If it were a factory, we'd be talking about something different, and that would clearly be a different situation.
Right. Okay. All right, thank you.
Ms. Favate, would you mind briefly addressing the cottage industry law and how that pertains to sacred? I think you, you know, maybe you have some points that you could make on that, if I could throw that to you.
Yeah, it's interesting, just for context, and I believe that New Jersey was one of the last states to actually adopt such a law. So they are very widespread and were very much, I think, longed for by some of these cottage industry folks who are, you know, looking to bake and make things in their homes. And it is based on the volume of sales. So fifty thousand dollars a year in coffee is not a small amount of coffee. And I think you heard, just for comparison's sake, it's about half of what, you know, this commercial coffee business produces in a year. So, you know, a person could be roasting in their home with fairly minimal regulatory oversight, a good amount of coffee within a neighborhood, any single-family neighborhood. And that's something that the state has decided and determined is appropriate and is manageable for coffee, as well as many other types of uses.
Ms. Favate, do you have a citation for that law? Or does Mr. Hare have a citation?
I can get it to you real quickly?
Yeah, I think he has it. I don't have it right in front of me.
If you give me about two minutes, I will pull up that law. And Ms. Favate, would you mind also addressing about the redevelopment aspects of this part of Princeton? I think we maybe talked about that earlier.
Yeah, I think it's interesting when you look at what's happening along the Witherspoon corridor. Certainly, I think anyone who's familiar here and who lives around here has seen the sort of rebirth a bit of this area into something that's not the downtown. It shouldn't be the downtown. It's its own thing. And I think for a small business like Sacred, who is looking for this kind of operation, it's attractive because it's not downtown Princeton. The rents are a little bit more affordable. There is potential for some of these more startup-type businesses that are looking to do something different in a slightly different environment. So I think it's definitely in keeping with what you've been seeing happen along Witherspoon Street.
Okay, and I can, you know, Miss Casey, I can quickly give you the site for the cottage food operator rule. It's J A C eight colon twenty-four, and it's, you know, one point five to eleven point eight, really eleven point one to eleven point eight, or where it sets out the regulations. So NJAC eight twenty-four, eleven one to eleven eight.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Does anyone else have any more questions for Ms. Favate?
I don't. Any board members, any other questions?
I actually do. Early in your presentation, I heard you mention Sustainable Princeton. Would you restate that? It surprised me. I am the chair of the board, and it sounded a little bit like endorsement, which...
Oh, yes. It was not intended to be an endorsement, Ms. Coulson. But my understanding from Mr. Haley is that there has been discussion going on with Sustainable Princeton about sort of the complementary emissions here. So I don't know, perhaps Jonathan can clarify that.
No, I have for a long time been friends with a former trust or board member. I don't know the right way to say it. So I am familiar with your mission. And so I'm just stating that as it relates to businesses within the community, and we talked at the prior meetings about everything we did on the composting side and our carbon reduction side of things, we see ourselves aligning with your goals.
That's, I think that's a more accurate way to put it than the other sounded a little bit like an endorsement, and I just want that to be clear.
Thank you for that point.
That would not, it's not, we're not in the business of doing that.
Understood, and it was not intended to be that way, but thank you for raising the point. It's good to clarify.
I think we're ready to conclude and move on to questions that the board or the public has. Yeah, I think any summary I could do would just be to repeat what you've already heard over the last two hours. So I don't want to do that to you.
Good, thank you. Okay, board members, do we have any questions of the applicant, the witnesses, before we open this up to the public? Okay, all right.
Just one question. I think it's ten fifteen now. Is it the board's intention to adjourn at ten thirty? How late, mainly for the benefit of those in the audience who have been watching, so? Are you going to take some comment? Are you, how late do you want to go?
We typically don't start any new cases after ten thirty, and we generally, well, lately have been adjourning at eleven. How many people do we have in wanting to speak?
I think you need to make it clear to them that they have to raise their hand because there's a number, there's a number of questions in the chat.
Yeah. Well, board members, how late do you want to go this evening?
On ten thirty. I'll tell you quickly.
Okay. All right. All right, if we, if we, well, ten thirty obviously doesn't give us a lot of time.
No, I mean, I guess what I'm really asking is, if your intention is to carry it, which I'm assuming is the case, since we've got fifteen minutes to go until ten thirty, unless you're ready to vote now.
No, we have to give...
If you want to advise the public that at your next hearing, you'll begin with public comment, which you have done in other situations where you've said, okay, we heard everything, now we will carry to the next month and open up now.
Well...
Everyone speak.
Derek, when would, if we were to carry this, when would we carry it until?
June meeting, which is June twenty-eighth.
Okay. All right. Yeah, I don't, I don't believe we're going to get through this tonight. I think, you know, we're going to hear, we've only got, and ten thirty is very reasonable. We've only, you know, got less than fifteen minutes. There's public comment. We need to discuss it and take action. So I would suggest that we carry it till, and I'm sorry about that for both the applicant and the public. But if we pick it up on the twenty-eighth, it'll start with public comment. Now, one other thing, some of the information that Michael suggested that the public should see, I think, I would think that we should post that, that that should be given to Mr. Bridger, and it should go on the website, so the public can see it.
Oh, the other suggestion I'd make is that, Ms. Jo Hare, as you indicated at the beginning of the meeting, you provided supplemental slides tonight, which I believe we were going to consider as exhibit A three. If you could provide those to the board secretary along with exhibit A two, which were slides you had provided at the March twenty-second meeting. I think they all consume the afterburner, which at that time your client intended to use. So that way the secretary will have a record of the proceeding.
Okay, we can do that.
You don't have, obviously, exhibit A three yet for tonight.
Okay. So I would think then, since we're going to carry it till the twenty-eighth, this will be, Derek, this will be the first hearing on the twenty-eighth?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we'll carry this application, which is again KC twenty-two dash two seventy three hundred Witherspoon Street to the meeting on the twenty-eighth of June. This will be the first application.
And the applicant will not be required to do any additional, noticing that's why it's being announced tonight with a specific date, June twenty-eighth, seven thirty.
Mr. Chairman, are you, we're, we're we're going to go till ten thirty? So we're going to let a few people speak, or we're stopping now? Is that what?
I would think since it's ten eighteen, I would think, let's break clean and then start with the public comment. And that way also is the public can see, can get a chance to review the slides from this evening and be a little more, you know, briefed on what's going on. So I would suggest that we just stop it now, unless somebody, unless you want to start hearing from some of the public.
Well, it's only ten minutes.
Well, I had a thought, even though I'm tired, and I know everybody is, that and it's just a thought at this point, that maybe sort of split the difference, and since we've heard so much testimony from the applicant, at least give some people a chance to speak. I know we wouldn't get to everybody, and maybe, maybe go to a quarter till eleven. That's what I mean by split the difference. But it's just a thought, and based on maybe a misplaced idea of fairness, but...
No, it's fine. I understand. Michael, what do you think?
I think the priority should be any members of the public within a timeframe, this timeframe, can't make the next meeting. They would get priority to speak in the next, you know, ten minutes or whatever. And that's that.
So are we good till a quarter to eleven? All right, so let's do this then. Let's, let's, let's start to open it to the public. I don't know how, if anybody, I don't know how we're going to determine who can be at the next hearing. But I would think, let's start with public comment. We're going to limit the comments to, I'd like, I guess we'll say five, no more than five minutes. And as we said at the beginning of the hearing, if you are related, former employees, current employees, or in any way related to the applicant, please, please note that when you're being sworn in. And again, like we say at every hearing, if you're, if you're going to repeat something that someone else has said, and you're going to reinforce that, just basically say, I agree with, you know, such and such, and we'll move on. Okay. Claudia, can you call the first person?
I don't know how to pick the first person.
Just, I don't either, so just pick one.
Raise your hand on the screen if you can't make the next meeting.
They're all raised.
If you can't rate, make the next meeting. Okay. There you go, Susan Cain.
Okay.
Good evening. Thank you for an opportunity to speak, Susan Cain.
Yeah, ma'am, we could just have your address, and then we'll swear you in.
Sure, I'm at Sixth Laurel Road.
All right, and do you swear or affirm any testimony you give this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
I, I'm, I live... Um, I, I'm, uh, I live less than a half a mile from the proposed new roastery. I am an active, physically active member, I'm constantly riding my bike and walking every morning and evening throughout town, and I go down Witherspoon. And I have been so excited that this coffee shop is coming to my area of town. Previously, prior to moving to Laurel Road, I lived over on the tree streets, and one of the fabulous things about the tree streets was the quick access to the local coffee shop over there, to the different restaurants, the, the sheer access that I could literally go out in my pajamas, grab a cup of coffee, and head back to my home. Being, as some of you, I can see your visual, George, I see you're, you're, you're laughing there, um, or George, um. So I, you know, I was super excited to see the extension, I see the meeting house over here on Witherspoon, I see Homestead. Um, so I've been waiting for this activity and waiting for, I've, I've read it through the local community pages, um, that something is coming, this coffee ha, coffee house. On one of my recent rides home from in the evening, in the evening, riding my bike, I actually stopped in, because I wanted to see what is going on, why is this taking so long? I'm seeing apartment complexes going up all over town, not a design, not, this is not what brought me to Princeton. I'm seeing the university bursting at the seams, you know, throughout the periphery, and I'm really excited to see something like a niche coffee shop, um, local coffee shop come close to my home. Um, I do happen to work in the food industry. Um, I also have advanced degrees in the food industry, so when I see something like this come, I've worked extensively through the best chefs in the world. Um, I do frequent, you know, good rest, what I term good restaurants, and local, small hole in the walls, which oftentimes provide the best, um, experiences. And I'm familiar with roasteries, I'm familiar with Starbucks Reserve, that's a much bigger, um, not, not too dissimilar from this. I have, uh, a family home down in the Outer Banks, in a small part of the Outer Banks, there's a local roastery down there. Um, that's a cafe, and I'm just really excited to see, to see this coming. I was more excited when I heard that they're doing cupping, they're providing an educational experience, they're providing the roasting, so it really does elevate. I don't know that we need another coffee shop, um, I'm thrilled that it is closer to this part of town, but I really feel like it, it is going to elevate and, and expand, um, what Princeton has to offer. From a scientific perspective, and I'm not watching my minutes here, um, when, how, okay, thank you, if you can just give me a, give me the, the yellow light, um. From a scientific perspective, I did say I'm a food scientist, so I've worked, bringing products to market, I've worked in retail, commercial, uh, space, and in shelf stable and, and, um, refrigerated spaces, so I know that, I know the industry. Um, I did Google while this, while, while I was on here, I did Google the experts that came that were, um, presenting, in particular, Dr. Ludisher, and we, he comes very well, um, he's very well recognized in the food industry.
Okay, if you could, if you could wrap it up, I'm sorry.
Okay, so, so from, from somebody that lives in the community, and my children go to school here in the public system, um, I'm, I'm thrilled, I'm thrilled that the extension of town is going this way, from a scientific perspective as well, I really respect the, the individuals um, and their expertise that they offered, and I have zero worries about any kind of, um, health concerns. Thank you for, thank you for listening to me.
You're welcome. Okay, Claudia, can you call the next person?
Hello, can you hear me?
Louder.
Hello, thank you for the opportunity to speak, um, I am Violeta Medina, I live in one hundred and five St. Whirl Lane.
Ma'am, we just need to swear you in, do you swear or affirm any testimony you give this evening will be truthful?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, thank you. I would like to bring, um, another dimension to this discussion that, um, has not been addressed, uh, before. Um, medical studies have shown that, um, sensory oversensitivity is not uncommon in children. This is a wide spectrum that includes smells oversensitivity. This affects eight percent to twenty-eight percent of children with known disorders. I think anecdotally, we all know a child who is very sensitive to his mouths. And Dr. Carpenter from Duke University School of Medicines reported in the Journal of Abnormal Child Psychology that sensory oversensitivity in children two to five is a risk factor, uh, for anxiety disorder. And so we haven't heard any evidence, um, on, on that. I would like also to point out that a large percentage of the disadvantaged children in Princeton live very close to, to the roastery, and they may have, uh, less access to medical services. And Community Park, um, if, if you allow me to be blunt, uh, the Community Park Elementary School is just one hundred feet from the roastery. And it has, um, um, sadly a stigma as the poorest school of the district, and I think allowing, uh, an industrial operation with the spells strong smells, one hundred feet from the school, it could really reinforce that notion in the Princeton community. Um, to give you even, I like a, a better picture of Community Park, Community Park is, is, um, is peculiar within the Princeton, because it's the only school which children from all over Princeton can opt in. And, uh, because it has the dual immersion language, Spanish, English. But because they can opt in, the children that are so for CP, they can also opt out. So I think approving this application would be really detrimental to the enrollment in Community Park. And we are at a time where the, um, there is an imbalance of number in the, in the, within the elementary schools. Uh, so I would like to, um, if, if, if you could provide evidence of, um, roasteries that are so close to elementary schools where no negative effect, um, has been, um, shown, um, I would be grateful for that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, okay. Uh, Claudia, can you call the next person?
Good evening, my name is Henry Singer, I live at one eight seven Laurel Circle.
Mr. Singer, do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes, I do. All right, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. I'll make very brief comments. Um, I am not affiliated with Sacred other than being a part-time patron, I also patronize, uh, Small Wall, so I don't hold a particular, uh, preference. I will say that I have, uh, frequented i- in other locations, uh, a coffee shop that has, uh, a roastery in, in much the same fashion uh, discussed tonight, and I found it personally added to the experience that, um, artisanal maybe is the word they're using, but for me, it, it makes for a richer experience in the coffee shop. And I personally welcome the opportunity to have that here in Princeton. I think that we, we really need to think hard, uh, about what we're doing to make Witherspoon Jackson neighborhood a more vital place. Uh, I think some mention was made of the meeting house, and Delisio's is in the neighborhood, and there's the places on Lee Avenue. And I personally would welcome, uh, given my proximity to the area, my, my children went to CP school, so I'm in the neighborhood, and I would welcome the opportunity to have a coffee and, uh, and visit the, uh, the new shop if we're, uh, permitted to go forward. So I, I would like to encourage you, uh, to say yes, and, uh, and go forward with this request from Sacred. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you. Claudia, call the next person, please.
Hello. Hi.
Claudia.
Can you get your name for the record and your address?
Sure, my name is Kit Berman, I live on seventy-three Birch Avenue.
All right, and do you swear or affirm any testimony you give this evening will be truthful?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you so much for all your service to our community, my family and I are grateful to live in Princeton, a town that values the quality of life of all its residents. I want to speak to you, to you tonight because I live on Birch Avenue between John and Witherspoon, within sight of the proposed new coffee shop and roastery, and my daughter goes to Community Park Elementary School. We are very excited for many of the walkable developments in our residential neighborhood. We eat at Tortugas, local Greek, get takeout from Elite Five, and we absolutely adore Conti's. We welcome even more restaurants, bars, and shops, and I can't think of anything more needed than a great new coffee shop within sight of my home and my daughter's school. I look forward to grabbing a cold brew on the way to the Community Park pool this summer and sneaking a quick espresso on the way to pick up my kid. But as excited as I am to welcome this new coffee shop into our community, I am deeply opposed to any zoning variance that would allow commercial roasting and its attendant air pollution and scent pollution in our neighborhood and next to our beloved elementary school. We bought our home in a residential neighborhood and wish it to remain as such. We already have all of the garbage trucks and construction vehicles in our backyard, and while that is a necessary thing for Princeton's well-being, adding more air pollution and foul smell in this neighborhood, elementary school and playground is not. I want to add that tonight was the Community Park Elementary School Science Fair. My seven-year-old daughter ironically is doing a project on scent, um, and many of the parents going tonight also expressed their opposition to the roasting aspect of this business, not the coffee shop to me, but due to the conflict, weren't able to attend tonight's meeting. So coffee shop, yes, please, caffeinate me, roasting, no, thank you. Um, and so I, I just thank you guys for your service, I thank everyone for staying up so late, and I realize there's a lot of people that need to talk, but this is our neighborhood, this is a residential neighborhood, and, um, this is why we have zoning laws, so thank you guys so much. We love coffee.
Welcome. Thank you. Okay, Claudia, can you allow the next person to speak?
I mean, I'll go.
Hello.
No, I think, Mr., is it?
It's Echeverry. Yeah, give me one second, I'm sorry, I'm just realizing that my phone is on three percent, so I just want to connect right quick. But, um, my name is Jonathan Echeverry, I reside at twenty-one Vermont Street in Maplewood. Um, I am a coffee roaster, and I own Paper Plane Coffee Company in Montclair, New Jersey.
Okay.
All right, sir, we need to swear again, do you swear or affirm any testimony you give this evening will be truthful?
I do swear.
Okay, thank you. I think you'd start to say you are a coffee roaster, that is your business, and I didn't hear the rest, I'm sorry.
So yes, so my name is Jonathan Echeverry, I own Paper Plane Coffee Company in Montclair, New Jersey, I'm a fifth-generation Colombian coffee grower. Uh, my family's been growing coffee in Colombia for a hundred and sixty years, I would actually, uh, spend time on my grandfather's coffee farm, wake up at five in the morning, milk cows, and then help my grandmother roast coffee on a saute pan, uh, every single morning. Um, I've heard kind of everybody, uh, ask their question, and I have a ton of the answers that, uh, were kind of left out. Um, Folgers famously had a commercial that said the best part of waking up is Folgers in your cup. With every single commercial, waking, uh, all the, all the people in their commercials waking up and smelling coffee and wanting to immediately go downstairs and buy the cup of coffee. We have been roasting in Montclair for, in September, it'll be four years, there are ten apartment buildings around us. We are directly across the street from the municipal building. There are tenants that live immediately above us. In the, in the time that we have been roasting here in this facility, we have never, ever heard a complaint. In, in talking about Folgers, one of the tenants who lives next door says she wakes up, opens her windows, so she can smell the fresh roasted coffee. Now, I, I don't know how we, the people are imagining that this is going to be, like, um, you know, I looked up the map of where this roastery is going to be. There are restaurants, there are bakeries, there's a diesel, uh, facility where there's at least twenty, uh, diesel trucks parked, um, you know, emitting CO2 and emitting emissions, um, you know, one of the board members that, one of the zoning members had asked if there was going to be electrical cars transporting, uh, the goods, I mean, the kids in their school buses don't go in electric, uh, school buses. The, those school buses are just as pollutant as everything else, whereas, if anything, roasting coffee emits a good smell, not just that, but with the, the afterburner or with the um, vortex, there's literally going to be no smoke, no nothing. And so uh, you can look up our address, one ninety-four Clermont Avenue, and you can see the apartment buildings. From our chip pack, we are about twenty away from one of the nearest windows to a tenant. And we've been there roasting coffee for close to four years and have never, ever, ever heard one complaint. And to, to just give you a scope of how much we roast, we have a six-kilo roaster, and we roast fourteen hundred pounds of coffee a week. A week. That's well over what Sacred is proposing, so like, it's, it's understandable that, that you all are care, like caring about, uh, the environment and everything, but this is overkill, and to bring this to the next hearing for an answer, to let them have to wait a whole month before they can start doing business in this is terrible, especially after we just came out of COVID, out of this pandemic.
Okay, Mr. Mr. Echeverry, I'm sorry to, that's, that's five minutes.
Just finished the global pandemic, and many businesses closed, especially small businesses. Most people are leaving the big cities to do, like, to, to start up these ventures. And like, this whole conversation is crazy. I'll tell you one thing that wasn't answered, the decibel level outside of the vent is, is literally nothing. You don't hear anything outside of, uh, from the, it's as bad as bad.
I'd like to give one more person the opportunity to speak tonight. Okay, I guess we will give somebody the opportunity. Claudia, can you call the next person? This will be the last public comment portion.
Hi, everyone, can you hear me?
We can, can we have your full name and address, please?
Yeah, my name is Leah Pransky, I live at two eighty-two Witherspoon Street.
All right, and do you swear or affirm that any testimony you give this evening will be truthful?
Yeah, I do.
Thank you.
Um, I don't, I'll keep it short, I don't have a lot to say besides, I think I'm definitely the person resident closest to, um, to the, the roastery that's spoken tonight. Um, I, I think a lot of people, you know, there's been a lot of incensed, uh, signs posted around the neighborhood that honestly kind of jarred me when I saw them, and I didn't know all of the information that has been presented tonight. I think it's just really important to focus on the science, I think parents are going to be incensed about anything that they think might even harm their kids, and they might not even be open to hearing some of the information that was, was presented tonight, but I really think decisions need to be made based on what we've heard about, it's actually going to smell good, and, uh, it's not, you know, they're, they're taking multiple steps beyond what's even required by law with this vortex to reduce emissions. Um, I'm personally really excited as a, a tenant who will be living here for probably the long term, probably have a kid here, um, I'm excited for economic revitalization in the neighborhood, and I think we just really need to, to be thinking about the science and not, uh, thinking with our emotions, so that's all I have to say, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, so that'll be it for this evening, uh, we will pick it up at the June hearing, and we'll continue with the public portion of the meeting. Okay.
Okay.
We are adjourned.
All right.
Good night.
Good night.